That's a great idea because Atlanta's just sitting up there and no one ever knows what to do.
Yeah, and then the, you know, like the whole, you got to make it with the, the steps.
Yeah.
How much is it cost? Realistically, something to be, I know how that game works.
Yeah.
When you don't want to do something, if they say, yeah, it's expensive. How much does it cost? And how much can we get when it turns out? And it's not, it's not, at some point, I'm not getting money. And if you fix those places up, for example, we still maintain the storage and the plumbing. We still maintain the microwave dish, uh, sits up on top, they give us access to that shit. We still keep our shelters up there, but there's, you know. And like you said, it's a positive cash flow. It's a city that's, you know, has a new fund that they're going to count on this money coming in. It depends whether they want to say, no, no, we're always going to spend it on parks because it's close to a park, there's parks there. Or, you know, whatever department needs it down here or a plant.
That's right.
You know, we, we need new, uh, new, uh, playground equipment or something and we don't, we don't have enough money to replace it.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's better than it is now.
That's right.
Big buildings just flooding away and just having, I mean, you look at the buildings and you look at these TV shows where it's a crappy house and it just transforms.
Flip my crib, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it isn't, I mean, you look at it that way, strip it down to just the skeleton that it is and build it back up with a new roof and everything. When you walk away to make it, um, make it accessible, you, you have diamond in the rock.
We drop fifty thousand dollars a year.
And then that area right there in front of what, the same river fund case, we can remove that, that roadway, fill in that, that.
Is that why it's, must be a sounder?
Oh, yeah.
Have you guys had any other kind of discussion at the, the level? Because I think one of my ideas up there.
We need more of them to discuss it. More of them.
Is, is that the AC that's on there? Cause when you open that door, the cold weeze comes out.
We were just fairly, we just talked today about we should meet a fight and you decided to talk like we are. It's just the first discussion, it's an idea as a brainstorm. How are we going to do or deciding what we're going to do or what's happening. Just like a spluratory brain.
Ricky said to say hi to you.
In their brains to see what, so I'm going to propose that and see if they, it's not.
He's that type of person when he's around, he's driving you crazy, but when he's gone, you miss him. That's, yeah. Yeah, yeah, I know Ricky. I know you're Ricky, I know. Yeah, he's working for Amazon.
Rick's son, Ricky. I'm just struggling. He, I mean, I think half of it right here, he was, uh, loving dearly and I didn't miss him.
He's, he's doing all right.
Hey, you're number, um, nine. Oh, you're number eight.
Any other questions?
We already know county over here making trouble.
Ha, ha, ha.
Hey, I didn't come here for meeting. You're lucky. I was thinking about it though.
It'd be fun.
No, I actually popped in for about ten minutes. I was at work and then I actually came up to him.
You know, my mother was gone there for sixteen years and I never looked one bit. You've been a little on hold. But never been.
Do I try to stay out?
Uh, Roland's still connecting.
Oh, yeah.
Wait, look at this.
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
This time we're going to resume the meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty. Senator, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Brett.
Ready. Wait, hold on.
You're leaving that way.
Fine.
Yeah.
Okay, ready for the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Senator Madigan.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Velasquez. Councilmember Lenore.
Present.
Councilmember Resendez. Councilmember Spencer.
Present.
interim city manager Miller.
Present.
City attorney Apperson.
Present.
Interim police chief Reynoso.
Present.
Thank you. The agenda for the city of Hollister City Council regular meeting of September eighth, twenty twenty was posted on the bulletin board on September second, twenty twenty at eleven thirty AM. Per government code section five four nine, five four point two.
Thank you very much. City attorney, will you please report out in closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The report out of closed session is that the city council discussed in closed session those items agendized for closed session discussion and direction was given to staff. The city council recessed from closed session at six thirty-five PM. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. This time we're going to move to the consent agenda. Are there any items council would like to pull?
Not me.
Is there any items that public would like to pull?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a motion?
I approve the consent agenda as presented.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, aye, motion carries. We're going to move to public input. This is the time for anyone in the audience to speak on any item not on the agenda within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speaker cards are available in the lobby and are to be completed and given to the city clerk before speaking. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium, state your name and city for the record, and speak to the city council. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes with a maximum of thirty minutes per subject. Please note that state law prohibits the city council from discussing or taking action on any item not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards. I'm going to check the attendee list in just a second, which I don't see anyone with their hand raised. But since we're on the topic of speaking, we've had a complaint from a constituent that while on Zoom, they're unable to hear people speaking on the dais and at the podium. So I'm just going to please reiterate to use your microphones, speak clearly, and whenever possible, if you can remove your mask, that would help as far as the speaking part goes. Or if you can just make sure that you're talking into your microphone, because once you get to the microphone, they say they can hear. It's, if you're gazing off or talking off topic, you can hear that it kind of just, but if you're right on your mic like this, it's, everyone can hear it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I do have one hand raised now.
We're going to, I'm sorry?
I have one hand raised.
Go ahead.
Courtney Evans.
Can you hear me?
We can, please go ahead.
Perfect. Um, earlier, uh, almost fourteen days ago, I was emailed the code of ethics and values from the city of Hollister. And in that it states that the code will be reviewed and evaluated annually. This was put out in, I believe, December eighteenth, two thousand seventeen. And I had publicly requested to see the, um, the reviews and how this was evaluated annually. And I have not been responded to that. So I would please like to ask that for two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen, that I see how this was evaluated and reviewed by the city council, the boards, and the commissions.
Thank you.
I have no other.
That's it?
I have no other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Will we move to item D one, city manager's report?
Yeah, I'll, um, on the public comment item, I will have staff review that and see what those items are.
Thank you. D two?
There are no trainings at this time.
All right, this time we're going to go ahead and move to item F one. Go ahead, city manager.
Actually, a staff member is going to be presenting this one.
Good evening. Um, so this item is related to an employment contract with Brett Miller with the position, for the position of city manager. Uh, the staff report is brief and speaks for itself, so if the public has any questions regarding this item, uh, they may address the city council or the city attorney. Therefore, I turn it over back to the council. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Any comments or questions from council?
I, I'll make a comment. Um, I just, I just want to say that, uh, it's been a pleasure to work with Brett as interim city manager for, uh, since November. He's been very attentive to, uh, things I ask him. He, he, if he doesn't have the answer, he gets it and he gets right back to you. And I always like that because I don't expect a city manager to know everything. I expect them to see what their staff says and get back to, to me. Um, I, I found him enjoyable to work with and I think that you will too. I think that staff has a team player that you know. Sometimes the unknown is not always good. You can work with what you know. Brett was a safe pick and right now I want it safe. So that's why I opted to go with Brett as full-time city manager, uh, permanent. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other comments from council?
I'll make a brief comment if I may.
Oh, yes, sir.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Brett Miller. I think you've been an incredible asset to, um, the city staff. And nobody could have predicted the unprecedented events that we, um, stumbled upon in twenty twenty. And you have just surpassed my expectations. I'm extremely grateful that you are, um, have been the interim city manager. And I think that you and your staff have handled with the utmost respect any situation that's come on up, come towards us. And I'm extremely grateful for you. So thank you and, um, best of luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I would agree with both Councilman Lenore and Resendez. Uh, you came in at a time where we were having some very big struggles and something no one could ever have predicted. And you took that and you made things happen under extremely stressful situations. I know we had many, many phone calls trying to, uh, move through this time. At the same time, working through the city's finances and everything else you were in charge of, you absolutely excelled through this. Uh, you showed you could handle the, uh, I don't want to call it the stress of it, but you can handle tough times, shall I say. And again, you've been very responsive with questions, doing the research, working with the team. And this is what we were all looking for, I believe, as our future city managers. So I want to say thank you for all the hard work you have done.
You're welcome and thank you.
Okay, do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty-one seventy-two, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hollister approving an in, an employment agreement with Brett I. Miller for city manager services.
There is a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, aye. Motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I look forward to continue.
You were my choice, my very first choice.
Mr. Mayor, may I give him the oath now?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Do your phone. This is going to be yours to sign. And I'll get you a pen and I'll get you. So if I may have you raise your right hand and repeat after me, mind anybody's sake?
All right, I'll be walking.
Is that better?
Perfect.
I state your name.
I, Brett Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
Oh, true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will.
And that I will.
Will and faithfully.
Will and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to.
About, upon which I'm, sorry, upon, well, upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Last part got me.
Congratulations, Brett.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Let the fun begin.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you very much. We are now being moved to item F two.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, F two is, uh, adoption of the ordinance for the city of Hollister amending chapter six animals, which would be adding section six point zero eight point one two five. Mandatory microchipping of dogs and cats prior to release after second impound. There are no amendments or changes, so this is just coming back for the second reading and adoption.
Any motion?
Oh, motion? Okay. I, I recommend that we waive full reading and adopt an ordinance, excuse me, I'll get the number. Adopt ordinance number eleven ninety-three. Eleven ninety-three requiring the mandatory microchipping of dogs and cats which have been impounded by animal care and services division after the second impoundment.
Thank you, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is a second, all in favors?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. We're going to move to item F three. Who will be presenting this?
Hi, this is Eva from the planning department. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. Uh, item F three is the second reading of an ordinance to amend title seventeen of the zoning code to add in some cannabis language that's consistent with chapter five. You heard this first reading at the August seventeenth meeting and tonight staff is recommending that the council read by title only. that the council read by title only, waive the full reading, and adopt an ordinance of the City of Hollister to amend miscellaneous sections of Title Seventeen zoning. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Any questions from Council?
No.
No.
Do we have any speaker cards? I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, and I have no hands raised. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we read by title only, waive the full reading, and adopt an ordinance of the City of Hollister amending miscellaneous sections of Title Seventeen zoning of the Hollister Municipal Code.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our motion carries. We're going to move now to item F four.
Okay, Mayor and Council. This item was brought forward to get a consensus from Council on August seventeenth. The intent was that we were working with the County of San Manito to come up with a joint face covering. They did not move forward with a face covering ordinance. So we did have a consensus from our Council to bring forward, though, so we have brought this forward. This is an item to remind people that there are other cities or counties that have this face covering. Some of them are San Francisco, the Santa Clara County, San Mateo County, Santa Cruz, Marin, Alameda. Both Monterey County and the city have a face covering ordinance, as well as our neighbors to the west, San Juan Batista. So we have brought this ordinance forward for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Is there any comments or questions from Council?
I'll wait till the public hearing.
All right. Do we have any speaker cards? I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, and I have no one's hand raised. Thank you. Got a hand raised. I got two hand raised. Okay. The first one is Ben. Ben, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Ben Hoffman. Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm calling about the mask ordinance. I believe there's spines associated with that. I believe the masks prevent the spread of COVID. In fact, I recently looked up several incidences where even the N nine-five mask doesn't prevent the spread of COVID. I did find, however, that it slows the spread of the COVID virus, and that in return does this flattening of the curve, as they say. However, that doesn't affect the end result of the situation or the death pool or the outcome. All it does is slow down the economy of the town, the businesses in town, and it hurts the people more because of the reactions to the COVID virus than the actual COVID virus itself. Every day, the numbers come out, and they're stable as far as recovery and individuals who show no signs of.
Yeah.
Extremely diagnosed when it comes to like, you know, liver failure, heart congestion, things like that. The ability that you guys have to increase the wealth in the economy and in the people in your economy, as I believe a right that you need to take seriously, and finding people that are exempt from wearing a mask, how are you going to know who's exempt from wearing a mask and who's not if they go into an establishment, and then you find the establishment for somebody coming in without a mask, but they were exempt because they have breathing issues or mental health issues or other issues that prevent them from wearing a mask? There are basically a lot of other problems. I don't believe it's worth your time trying to figure out an ordinance on something that's only affecting a small percentage of the population, when in fact, the reaction to the virus is affecting the whole population, whether it's depression or crime or suicide or whatever it may be, the impact has been extremely negative as far as the reaction to the virus and comparison to the virus itself. I think that you should get out of the way of the businesses in town. I mean, you should get out of the way of the education services in town, and I think you should get out of the way of the people in town so that they can freely do what they.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben. Your time is up. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
For Donna Freitas? Unmute yourself, please.
Hi, good evening. This is Deanna Freitas. I emailed you guys on Friday over the weekend a long list of why many of us are opposed to a mask mandate. And there were a lot of reasons why we were opposed to it, and there was also some cultural and local reasons as to why we need to leave people alone and, you know, look after our businesses. I think our biggest concern right now is getting all of our businesses open right away. Our downtown is going to suffer. The restaurants that have outdoor seating are not going to be able to carry that out very much longer. October, November, it's going to get rainy and cold, and then what are you going to do? I think our businesses are going to be forced to die, especially based on the science that's out there. As of right, the sciences conflict. You can have a leftist scientist say that masking works, and you'll have a conservative scientist say it does not. So it's to say whose science is correct. I think individuals. I just heard you guys take an oath of office of the whole petition in the California Constitution, and I think in order to do that, you need to let individuals make the choices of what they need to do to best take care of themselves, their family, and the community. And to force mandates on people, it's going to be very divisive based on some of those points I outlined. And we really need to be proactive getting our businesses open. If businesses want to open with masks, then people who don't want to wear masks don't need to go there. People want to open without masks, then people who want to wear masks don't need to go there. The fairest thing that you can do is to open up this community and let people make their, the mortality rate of this year's flu, and that's what it is, this year's flu, is less than half a percent. So that puts us right in range with all the other flus. I think there is no science, I don't think, I know, there is no science that validates masking healthy people. You're talking about masking ninety-eight percent of the people. Further, CDC has already come out and amended their mortality rates. They've already come out and said there is no benefit to masking healthy people, and they've already come out and said that asymptomatic people are not spreaders. I know that was a big, big news item back in March. It turns out it is not true. If you do not have symptoms, you're not a spreader. So I don't see the purpose of masking people, creating all these derissons. Also.
Thank you, Vedana. Thank you, Vedana. Your time's up. Thank you. Emily Stowe?
Hi, sorry. My name is Emily Scow.
Scow, thank you.
I lost my voice. Scow, thank you. Lost my voice to the smoky air conditions. But I'm questioning the mask mandate. I think there's a lot of questions about it. Number one, people in Hollister don't even realize there's a mask mandate that is under discussion. Just being out in the community and talking to people, they have no idea. And I agree with everything that Vedana said is our main focus right now should be opening up our downtown safely. We're killing it. We have worked so hard to bring business to downtown. With these smoky conditions, with California on fire, the smoke, you know, it's so sad to sit out in the parking lot and see restaurants trying to operate in these smoky conditions, waitresses having to run inside outside with a mask on, and they're telling us that wearing a mask in these conditions are actually worse. I also just don't understand the mask mandate. If we're talking about a mandate to help against the COVID, why are we not doing hand sanitizing stations before entering stores? You can walk into Target, you can touch everything in Target, but as long as you have a mask on, there's no question. And if we're going to talk about mandating one thing, then why are we not mandating hand sanitizing six feet apart, stores not being packed, essential businesses being the only ones open, apparently? Why are we not talking about that and mandating that? So that's a question that I have. Also, if you are mandating, it says, I read the three pages in the mandate, that people that have a health condition, whether it be mental or medical, if they're not able to wear a mask, they're still allowed to go into the store. But you guys are not having store employees being trained on allowing people in the store. They are being confronted at the front door, saying they're not allowed in, they have to get a manager, causing a scene with someone with a disability that can't mentally or medically wear a mask, but no one's training these employees. And it's turning, it's just turning ugly out there. So again, I would say no. On the mandate, revisit it. November, December, we'll probably have a lockdown again. Maybe that's something to revisit then, but as of now, it's September, it's a hundred degrees outside, and people are walking around with masks on because they just, they just don't know. It's okay to take your mask off in a parking lot. It's okay to have your mask off outside. Back in March, I remember wearing my mask into stores because I didn't know what this virus was about. I was scared, but then common sense told me, keep my distance. If I'm sick, stay home. So, yeah. Anyway, revisit the mask mandate. I vote no. Thank you.
Courtney Evans?
Hi there, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
She already started.
Hi there. I am calling to ask that you take this off of this and all future agendas. Right now, you are trying to act like a police officer. You are not empowered to enforce laws. You are practicing medicine without a license, which is illegal in all states of America. There is a pretty serious felony. A mask to prevent a viral transmission is a medical intervention that carries risks. To wear this mask, it would reduce my oxygen intake, increase my CO2, increase my risk of viral and bacterial fungal lung infections, fungal face infections, potential brain damage from reduced oxygen. A list of a hundred and thirty-one scientific articles and reasons to avoid wearing a mask can be found online at www.revealingforlaw.com and my doctor's orders. If you are practicing medicine without a license, you can be sued for the damages that your advice might cause. And if another county or city has an enforcement, that is not a legitimate reason. I hereby again claim my own medical exemption. I'm not required by law to tell you my medical history, nor are force fines upon me because of it. Medical professionals can only prescribe medical procedures, which means give advice. They are not legally allowed to mandate any medical procedures, which includes wearing a mask. You do not have the medical power of attorney over me, nor has any of these people in this community hired you to be the doctors. By wearing a mask, you are compromising your own oxygen intake. I added into your brain and help you understand the rest of this. To you understand the offense of your illegal discriminations, I would also like to read off a list of things that fall under a medical exemption. It is PTSD. It is asthma, allergies, anemia, fungal infections, blood clotting disorders, diabetes, autism, pre-existing lung conditions. And according to the OSHA air quality requirements, it is a necessity for humans to consume oxygen. Masks have been shown to reduce oxygen to eighteen percent and increase the CO2 to over ten thousand ppm. Please vote no. Please stop wasting taxpayers' and your constituents' time to continually put this on your agenda. The County of San Manito County has already taken this off the agenda, I think, six times. So please use your time.
Thank you, Courtney. Thank you. Thank you, Courtney. I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much. Any comments from Council?
Okay. Okay, I'll go first. This has been on my mind since the last meeting, and by the way, we, this meeting was called because of the last meeting. We said we were going to have a public hearing. It's noticed in the paper. It's out there on Facebook. People should have known that this meeting tonight was for this item, so I don't buy that people didn't know. If you're really interested in an item, pay attention. That's what I'm saying. Okay. So I was concerned about the city's ability to enforce it. That was the first on my mind. I've had discussions with court enforcement, and I've had discussions with the police department, and they seem to think it could be. It could be a tool that they could use. I'll let them speak for themselves. I don't like to speak for other folks unless they say I can, but I did reach out. I also reached out to a local physician because I wanted his opinion, and he said, well, he understands the importance of it, but even he admitted that, well, maybe it's a little far-reaching. I appreciated his comments, and I took him to heart. I think we have a very high positivity rate, nine point two as of today. And Monterey only has eleven point two, and they got a lot of farm workers over there that have gotten COVID. That's why their numbers are driven so high, but why are our numbers so high at nine point two percent? And they've been higher than everybody else. They've inched up, inched up, inched up. And do you see Santa Cruz? Do you see how their numbers have come down? Santa Cruz is actually going on to the next colored tier, I'll just say. Maybe people don't realize that we're on the worst tier possible. Okay? There's a whole criteria set out of how you go into the next tier. I don't see us doing that unless the numbers come down. Okay, just a second. So here's what I have to consider. Sometimes I listen to the Health Department community. They just seem very insistent that face masks reduce the spread along with the six-foot distancing, along with all the family gatherings. Look, I know it's tough, but tell you what, I don't want to get anybody sick of my family and elder, and they pass away. I'm very, I haven't seen my aunt for four months, five months, except for yelling at her from the street because that's how much I don't want to give it to anybody. And remember, I already had it, but I'll tell you what, I'm not looking forward to getting it again. Okay. You notice lately on TV, I watch TV, there's a lot of commercials. Boy, they really bumped up the commercials on the face covering. Do your part. That's what they're saying. Do your part. And they must have spent a whole bunch of money because it's all over the TV. There's a reason for that. Some folks don't even know they could be a super-spreeder. We know kids are super-spreaders because they bring everything home under the sun when they come home from school. They're super-spreaders, and they don't know sometimes. So that's a little scary for me, people walking around not knowing they have it. They might not have symptoms, but they got it. So I mentioned that we're in the highest tier, and that must be met. There must be criteria met to progress to the next tier. I honestly think that this would be a great step in the right direction to reopen schools. We get the numbers down, or the schools aren't going to reopen, and they're the highest priority for me, over the businesses and over everything else, because our kids need to get back to school in the classroom. This should be a top priority. I think we need to work on it. I support any and every private business that declares a mask requirement to enter their business. Maybe you don't understand what the private businesses are faced with. They have to deal with workman's comp. Workman's comp is telling them, you better get those employees covered up and sanitized. They do all that store cleaning, and they have every right to. and they have every right to require somebody to wear a mask to enter their private business. And if you don't want to, don't go in. How do I go against Dr. Fauci and his persistent message that masks slow the spread? He's a scientist. I can't just discount what he's saying and all the other health professionals. So tell me this, I serve on the agency for area aging. How do I look those seniors in the face when I go to a meeting or I go on Zoom and they're all wondering, what the heck? They're at the most, the highest risk and we don't want to support them by putting on a mask? I like John Freeman's statement in San Juan Batista. By the way, kudos for them. I'll shop there every day of the week. John Freeman's statement, I'm for face mask, I'm for social distancing, and I'm for trying to fight this virus. And that's what I want to say. And I gave it a lot of thought. I tried to go with the no fines, but I just can't do that. Now, I would be willing to have a hundred dollar fine across the board with no escalator. I don't want to hurt people. I don't want to zing them. I want them to put a mask on. So I'm gonna send the message by supporting the penalty for not wearing a face covering. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Lenora. Any other council members like to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilmember Spencer.
Like Carol said, I've looked into this. I've been thinking about this because I did want this to be brought back up. And again, I will say that I, I, I'm gonna vote against it because I will go with a hundred dollar fine across the board, but not violations being two and five hundred dollars. If somebody does not want to wear a mask, then I, it's not my place to tell them they have to wear one. If they walk up to a store, which I know happens, because I did, I walked up to a store, forgot my mask. I was told to go back to my car and get a mask or don't come in. I turned around, I went back and got a mask. Um, I go into the stores. I see people in the stores without mask. I'm not gonna approach them. If the, if the grocery stores allow people to come in without a mask, that's on them. It shouldn't be on us to mandate what they have to do. If a small business does not require people to wear masks in their business, that's on them too. That's their bad. It's not our bad. I do not want to put extra work on our police force, our fire department, our code enforcement, anybody. I, I look at this ordinance, and it's not a law, it's an ordinance. But I look at this ordinance and I see things that just don't feel right. You're, you're creating dissension among neighbors. You're creating more problem than what we have. We are already a divided community thanks to certain people in our community. This will divide it even more. And I just can't do that. We need to bring this community back together. We need to stop the spread. And everybody does. I, I wear masks. I don't want to, but I do wear a mask. I took it off now to talk. I am not gonna force people that don't want to wear a mask outside to wear a mask. And here's one of the reasons why, and I said this to somebody and he understood it. If I'm out in front, in my front yard, I'm out in public, if I'm with five other people, whether it be family members or in my neighbors and we're talking and none of us are wearing masks, and my neighbor across the street has a grudge against me, they're gonna call the police on me and the police are gonna show up. I will not appreciate that. That will cause more problems in my neighborhood than anything else. I've just, I'm not gonna go on, I'm not gonna preach. I'm just gonna say that, um, I'm voting no against this ordinance. Again, I will say this is not a law, it's an ordinance. And that's all I have to say.
You? Anybody else like to speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Senas. Thank you. Um, I think it's no secret that I made this
pretty clear last time we talked about this, that this issue frustrates me. And it has been on my mind since we last talked about it. It's been on my mind since the very first time we talked about it. I'll be honest with you. Um, I guess what frustrates me the most is how politicized this issue has become. Um, and I don't want to blame, I really don't want to sit there and play blame on one group or another. I just don't want. I'm gonna say my piece of mind and I want to tell you what I think is the right thing to do and then move forward. But I, I have to point out, like I did last time, how disappointed I am with the actions of San Bernito County Board of Supervisors. Um, I think that if we're gonna do this, that we should have all communicated better and we should have all been on the same side. It just, it doesn't do anybody good not to do that. It doesn't make any sense. And I really do feel that they were influenced by politics more than what the right thing to do is in, for their constituents, which was what they were elected to do. Um, I think that our council has been very supportive of business and the community. If you look at our track record, our voting record, you will see that. Um, and bottom line is if you pass a policy, there needs to be some type of consequence. I have faith in our staff to execute the ordinance in a fair manner. And even more so after hearing that Councilmember Lenora did her, her homework and she spoke to them. Thank you for that. I'm assuming that. Um, is our community doing well? Uh, I just don't see that many people in the stores not wearing masks, but the numbers are not reflecting that. They're just not reflecting that. We had another fatality in our community today. And I just think it's gonna get worse. I have to side with common sense, logic, science, medical professionals. And I took an oath to protect the public and I really believe in what they're saying and that passing a mask ordinance is going to do just that. You know? If there's any potential that we did not pass a mask ordinance and, and, uh, and things got worse, then I couldn't, I couldn't live with myself. I would, it would weigh very heavy on my heart. You know? I'm not gonna be that person, especially being in public office, that took the wrong side. When we look back on history, I think it's reckless and irresponsible to be that person. And it saddens me that we have those people here as elected officials in our community. Um, if you don't wanna wear masks, then don't wear one. But don't go into our stores and don't put our community, our people that work for us, their health and their safety at risk. Just don't do it. Stay home and send someone else to the store. Find other ways to protect your physical health, your mental health. That's, that's my take on it. And of course, I'm gonna support this. I didn't want to have this especially because I was so frustrated with the county, but if it comes across my desk, it comes across something that I have to decide, I took an oath to protect the people and I'm gonna do just that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Resendez. My opinion on this mask requirement has been the same since day one. I want to thank, uh, Councilmember Senas, Councilmember Lenora. Ms. Lenora, I think you laid it out so, so well, especially the part about our children going back to school. And I want to thank the council members in San Juan Batista. They were the true leaders here. They didn't hesitate for a moment to pass it. And I, I really appreciate that type of leadership. I'm highly disappointed in the county electing to, to take the lead, especially when the health department is under their control. I can remember in the early days, we as a community were working together so well to keep our numbers down. I remember other cities' council members calling me asking how we were doing it in San Juan Batista, uh, culture, and how we were able to keep our numbers low and how it was that with the low numbers, we were gonna reopen sooner than they all were. And they were just asking, how are we doing? And I kept telling them, we are working as a community. It's been great. Everybody's participating, doing their part. And then it all changed. Then the fighting started, the misinformation started, accusations started. What was the result of it? Well, today, we had another death. Although people feel nobody's dying in our community, they are. This week, we had two in total that died. From the beginning, we've had ten in our community that have died. In our country, we've had two hundred thousand people that have died. And I remember hearing those saying, this is no worse than the normal flu where forty, fifty thousand people die each year. And we're not even done. We're headed towards the worst part of this pandemic as winter comes upon us. And it's a shame, shame that here we are still finding reasons to avoid wearing a face cover. A face cover that can help prevent someone else. Forget yourself, you don't care, but prevent someone else from getting the infection by the simple measure of wearing a face cover. Think about that. You might be protecting somebody else's life by wearing a face cover. Instead, we're arguing about how they're not effective and every other thing that somebody can bring up, which are not true. We have people saying we need to open our businesses. Well, guess what? Most of our businesses are open. Very few are closed. But at the rate we're going, what we're gonna see happen in our own community is more businesses being shut down. Because this pandemic, this virus is going to keep spreading in our community as long as we have this attitude that you cannot make me do something I don't want to do. That's a shame. We were the leaders and now we're in the back of the pack. Santa Clara County tomorrow is going to the next level. Santa Cruz is going to the next level. Their nail salons are gonna be opening up tomorrow along with other businesses. Ours aren't, or we're near it. Matter of fact, I got the update today. The positivity rate's actually thirteen percent in our community. Thirteen percent, which is extremely high. And yet, here we are, still having these same conversations about the constitution and everything else and every way possible to keep from wearing a face cover. A simple face cover to protect each other, to beat this virus. If we all wore the face covers, if we all kept our distance, if we all did our little piece to protect each other, we'd be done with this virus and we'd be back to normal. And our kids, as Ms. Lenora pointed out, could be back in school. But instead, it's become political and lives are being lost with each and every day that we procrastinate and we make additional excuses. And that's a shame. I will never be a part of that. I've said from the very beginning, our job is to make sure our community is as safe as possible. And I'm gonna stay to it and make sure we're doing our part in our community. So I want to thank Councilmember Lenora and Councilmember Senas again for your, your words. I think they're very important. And again, the council in San Juan Batista, you guys are awesome over there. You showed real leadership. Worked out. Is there a motion on this item?
Uh, Mayor, uh, will, will we consider the, the fine amount? Or I really do want to, I really not interested in the escalator on the second and third offense. I want to try just a hundred dollars for now.
Ms. Lenora, you, you can make the motion answer, please.
Okay. All right. So I move that we, I move that we read by title only, waive the full reading and introduce an ordinance amending Title VIII Health and Safety. Oh.
Health and Safety. Forgot my mic. I'm gonna start over for the benefit, okay? I moved that we read by title only, waive full reading and introduce an ordinance amending Title VIII Health and Safety, adding chapter eight point zero five face coverings to the Hollister Municipal Code and adopting the California Department of Public Health guidance for the use of face coverings to be enforceable by administrative citation. And schedule, and I'll note that I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the proposed ordinance so that we just utilize one fee of a hundred dollars and not an escalator to two and five hundred. And schedule a second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the September twenty-first, twenty twenty, the September twenty-first, twenty twenty, City Council Meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Lenora. Is there a second?
I will second that, Mr. Mayor.
There is a motion as second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
No.
Motion carries. Three, one. Thank you very much, everyone. We're gonna move now to item F five.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Item F five is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approving an appropriation from the general fund reserves in an annual amount not to exceed nine thousand five hundred dollars and authorizing an agreement with DocuSign for e-signature enterprise pro edition and adopting a digital electronic signature policy for the City of Hollister. Now, this e-signature would not be usable for resolutions or, um, ordinances, minutes, things that need to be kept for legislative history. But what it will do is make it more possible for internal and some external documents to be signed. Because of all the teleconferencing, everyone is not attending the meetings. We're not able to get all the signatures we need. Not just the city clerk's office, but all departments have expressed that they could use this. So the reason I'm asking for not to exceed nine thousand five is because it's about, about five, Paul? I think it's about five. I don't know if you saw the two attachments I put in there, but we're gonna start with the five hundred dollar envelopes. We don't know, um, how much the city's gonna use because we've never tried or used this system before. But we want to have the option that if we go over the five hundred, we can either pay per envelope, and I'm, I'm not exactly sure how this is all gonna work out, but eight dollars and eighty cents each, or they'll give us an option. Like, let's say in six months, they discover that we're already almost through our five hundred, then we would have the option to move to the thousand, which would be the not to exceed, the higher price, which is why I'd like to have that money sitting there just in case we decide that that's what we need. But in the meantime, I'd like to start with half and just see how we do. I know police has just, um, has said that they can use it and I think all departments are interested. So it's, even though I'm requesting it, it's going to be for everybody in the city to be able to use.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council? Not necessarily questions, quick comment, if you may.
Go ahead, sir.
I, I just want to point out again, Christine, this is another example of how competent our staff is and how you guys are always ahead. Um, I really appreciate it. Not just with this, but you've done that with our filing, our paperwork, Paul, with all of the technology. You know, it's just, I'm just really proud to be part of this team and I'm very grateful to have you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, I do have something to say. I love DocuSign. I do. I have been using it. It is so easy. It makes signing thing, signing contracts and papers that I have to sign, not through the city, but through the high school. We use it at the high school and we have been using it for a while. Um, it's amazing. Um, I definitely think you guys will love it.
The county really helped me out by showing me what they, what they're using and showed me, um, how they're using it. And that really inspired me to, to bring it back to the group. Paul tried to do it about a year ago, maybe? Yeah. So, I'm glad, I'm glad. I'm excited. Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on the spot?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, and I have no hands raised.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one seventy-three, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approving an appropriation from the general fund reserves in an annual amount not to exceed nine thousand five hundred, authorizing an agreement with DocuSign Incorporated for e-signature enterprise pro edition.
Thank you. Motion, is there a second? I'll second that, Mr. Mayor. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're gonna move to item F six.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Uh, Bob Martin Del Campo, Fire Chief, Hollister City Fire. Um, item F six is a resolution, um, twenty twenty one seventy-four, uh, making a recommendation to surplus the fire apparatus, uh, for a telesquirt. It's a nineteen ninety-seven piece of equipment, uh, ten years in service frontline, ten years in service reserve. Um, it's actually twenty-three years old. We've tried to prolong its life by giving prepar, uh, repairs and maintenance. Um, it's done its job. Uh, right now, it's been plagued with, um, continuous maintenance and it's costing quite a bit of money. It's rather expensive for an antiquated piece of equipment like that. Um, it, it, uh, like I said earlier, it has been plagued with, um, uh, service issues, but it, it's done its job. And this is just a recommendation for council to go ahead and, um, allow us to surplus it.
Thank you, sir. Any questions from council?
No.
Do, do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards and I have no hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution number two twenty dash one seven four as stated.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll move to item F seven. We'll move to item F seven.
One moment, Mr. Mayor. Tina, please go ahead.
I, I'm here, yes.
F seven, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Velazquez and City Councilmembers. I'm Tina Garza, Recreation Supervisor. This resolution before you will approve an agreement with San Benito County to offer drive-in movie events at the Veterans Memorial Park parking lot. And the parking lot is located where staff can encourage social distancing and provide tip guidelines to entertain and engage residents. The City of Hollister Recreation Department would like to offer a drive-in movie event that are free to the public. Are any questions?
I have a question, Tina.
Yes, Ms. Lenore.
I, yes, please. I they'll stay in their vehicles? Is that the plan?
Yes. They are required to stay in their vehicles. The only time they'll be able to come out is if they need to use the restroom and face coverings are required.
And then somebody on staff will be there to monitor that?
Yes, we will have staff out during the whole event.
Thank you, Tina.
You're welcome.
Comment if I may, Mr. Mayor. All right, sir. Again, I'm gonna beat the drum all night. I did bring this up at a city council meeting. I had a conversation with the city manager the next day and Ms. Tina Garza. They had already been working on this. It's just another example of how our staff is looking around, bringing things back to our city that are gonna benefit our community. I'm very excited about this and again, I'm just grateful for Tina Garza and our department for how they pivoted during these times. Thank you.
Uh, Ms.
Could you agree with you more, sir?
Mr. Mayor, one more small comment, please?
Go ahead.
I want to thank the county of San Benito for entering into this agreement with us. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have none, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I will make the motion to adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash one seventy-five.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're gonna move on to item F eight.
Mayor, real quick. I just wanted to thank Tina on this item. She had to go through a lot of hoops. She wanted to have this out weeks ago and I just really appreciate her dedication to get this out for our community.
She never lets us down.
Thank you, City Mayor Miller. The next item is Recreation. Good evening, Mayor Velazquez and City Councilmembers. Tina Garza. Items F eight and F nine are two grants that staff applied to in actually August of twenty nineteen. And unfortunately, the City of Hollister was not awarded either grant. But recently, the California Department of Parks and Recreation Office of Grants and Local Services announced the opportunity for agencies to apply for around four of the statewide park program. As staff recommends by a roll call vote, a resolution approved the application for the statewide park program grant funds. And if these projects are approved, the grants would help in developing a park at Fire Station Two and to develop the Leatherback property.
Thank you, sir. That is?
Yes, that's it.
Thank you. Is there any questions from council?
I do have a question.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Tina Garza. Then the two grants that we applied for, they were not approved and they were essentially for the same thing. Is that correct?
It was around there.
Correct. Yes. We have recently worked with a project manager with the State Parks and Recreation Office and to help guide us in maybe changing some of the language and information and letting us know what some of our faults were and how we can improve it so that when we do apply in December, we'll have a better opportunity to make the award, the grant.
And that was my next question. I remember part of that had a community center. Is that still part of the plan? And was there any feedback on that at all?
Yeah, that's, the Leatherback property is where we were considering the community center. And the feedback, are you asking feedback from the community or feedback from the state department?
Um, well, it depends. I guess, I just want to know what was the overall feedback for having the community center? And is that gonna be considered for this grant?
The feedback from the community, the park, the community center is what community members are seeking, just because we had, we requested a gymnasium, which is needed here in our community. There was a field on, a soccer field, a roller rink. So the community was in favor of our, our, the amenities that we wanted to include at the park. At the grant office, there was some information that we were missing. So we will now be able to provide it this, the second go around.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one seventy-six, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approving the application for the statewide park development and community revitalization program grant funds.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Question is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you wanted a roll call vote on the question.
Oh, that's correct.
Correct. Roll call vote. Thank you very much.
Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Councilmember Spencer, Vice Mayor Spencer, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
Thank you. It passes unanimously?
Thank you. We're gonna move now to item F nine.
Tina Garza, again, council. This one before is similar to the, to item eight. And this one would offer, would be under the Leatherback property. And then this is also, we recommend that the City Council adopt by a roll call vote.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one seventy-seven. I got lost.
I'm sorry, say it again.
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one seventy-seven, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister approve the application for statewide park development and community revitalization great funds.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
A roll call.
Roll call vote. Mayor Velazquez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lenore?
Aye.
Councilmember Resendez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spencer?
Yes.
Thank you. Passes unanimously?
Thank you very much. We're gonna move on to item F ten.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Item F ten is a resolution that will designate Sinagro Incorporated as the lowest responsive bidder for removing two thousand dry tons of sledge from pond two at the industrial wastewater treatment plant and appropriating one point five million dollars from fund six six five, which is a sewer industrial enterprise bond. I apologize on the financial impact section. I did not put the fund balance down there. And that's because things were in flux up until last week. I am happy to report that I was able to get San Benito Foods to fully execute the twenty twenty discharge permit, which obligates them to pay the complete cost of this item. The one point five million dollars broken down is, the bid amount was for one point one five eight. And our consultant recommended a healthy contingency fee because sledge estimation is a exact height. And as you're aware, we need to do a clean closure. We need to get it all out. So we went ahead and put a thirty thousand dollar, or thirty percent contingency fee to that amount. And we included sixty thousand dollars paid with the consultant supervised the work.
Any questions from council?
Do you have a question?
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what you're stating, Mr. Chambles, is that San Benito County Foods essentially agreed to remove sledge from the pond? San Benito Foods is required to remove the sledge under the executed discharge permit. And they executed option one under the permit and they already deposited one million dollars to accomplish this work. And they pledged to pay the remaining cost. We actually don't expect it to come in at one point five. We just need to have that contingency there in case it has to. There's several there.
Mike, can you hold on? Can you hold on for, Mike, can you hold on for one second? Carol Lenore wants to recuse herself.
Well, I asked, the city attorney has advised that I recuse myself because of, I'm the neighbor. Well, I'm a neighbor to the San Benito Foods and it's a little related there, so I'll step away. I don't want to mess it up.
Thank you, Ms. Lenore.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay, so you're saying that we're going to get one point five million dollars? But it might, the bid might come underneath that, is what you're saying, essentially?
The bill. The bill may be less than that and that would be the amount that they pay. They're not, they're not obligated to pay the full one point five if we don't spend it.
So how much are the taxpayers gonna be paying to remove that sledge?
Zero.
Oh, perfect. So then San Benito Foods is covering the entire cost of the sledge removal and the taxpayers are not gonna pay any of it?
Correct.
Awesome. And nobody lost their jobs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Alright. Is there any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mike, I just want to say thank you for following this through. Great for following to get the sledge removed from that pond and so we can move on. So thank you very much again for everyone involved in this, these conversations. Is there a motion on this item?
I will make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty one seven eight, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister designating Sinagro Inc. Corporation as the lowest bidder for removing two thousand dry ton sledge from the industrial wastewater treatment plant pond two and appropriating one point five six six five hundred thirty-four million dollars from fund six six five sewer industrial enterprise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Bring back Councilmember Lenore or we'll move to item F eleven.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, everybody.
As the council recalls, prior to the summer break, we went out to bid to do some modernization improvements out of Public Works Yard. In a component of that project was backup electrical generation for the animal control facility. This resolution will award a contract to Manzo Construction Incorporated, a local business, for the completion of the corporation yard improvements and will provide a supplemental appropriation of a hundred thirty-five thousand for construction management and additional costs on the emergency generator of slight improvements to the locker room and for project supervision by Kingly Horn Incorporated through our on-call engineering agreement. The bid for the generator exceeded the grant amount. If you, if you all recall, you had a grant for fifty thousand dollars for the emergency generator for animal control and the bid amount came in at a hundred thousand. So we need an extra fifty thousand to cover that part of the project. There is about thirty thousand dollars in there to upgrade the fire safety of the locker room. We went ahead and upgraded the electrical in there from minimum code to a heavier gauge wire so it stayed cooler. And also, we replaced the normal plywood with fireproof plywood so that there's no chance of there ever being any issues inside of those locker rooms. And then finally, there's money, a manageable cost of approximately sixty thousand dollars to supervise the completion of the project with Kingly. The majority of the additional funds are coming from the water fund. Fifty thousand dollars is coming from the general fund to cover the animal control portion of the expense.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Hi, more of a statement.
Go ahead, sir.
I'm a little bit concerned, Mike. Sorry, Mr. Chambles. I didn't realize that the entire grant was not covering it. And when I hear we're taking fifty thousand dollars out of our general fund, I don't know if right now is the best time to do it. So what, I guess, what are the stipulations of the grant? Are we, do we have to do this? Do you think we're gonna lose? And then how much more are we getting from the grant aside from the fifty, fifty thousand?
I, I would defer to the police chief because he's the one who handled the grant portions. I just know the grant is for fifty thousand dollars and the cost to provide the emergency generation.
Yes, if I may, Councilmember Resendez. The grant is for fifty thousand dollars for the, specifically for a generator at Animal Control. If we don't spend the money on that, we would just have to give the grant back to Homeland Security Grant or request a revision to be used in some other fashion. But that would have to go through approval process to, to obtain that possibility.
I'm having a little bit of a hard time hearing you. I'm sorry. How long do we have before we have to make that decision?
The grant was approved earlier this year. I think we do have the remainder of this year to make that decision. But as far as the deadline, I would have to get back to you as far as a drop deadline to do something with the grant money or not.
Okay. And then what's the total amount of the grant?
The grant for the generator is fifty thousand and this has come in at forty-three, I believe it forty-three or forty-six thousand additional money that is needed according to the bids that came in.
I'm just a little bit concerned about, I'm wondering if you can go back and look at your budget and see if you can move other things around and then come back at a later date. That would probably be better for me just because we don't know what our finances are gonna look at, look like pretty soon here.
Is there any other comments, questions?
I, I'm for moving forward. I'm just a forward kind of guy. I'd like to move forward. We're gonna do it anyway. I'd like to just do it now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have a question? I thought I heard Mr. Chambles say something about upsizing some wiring and some other things to, to make this work. What kind of cost increases are we talking about?
The total cost increase for the fireproof plywood and the twelve gauge wiring instead of fourteen gauge wiring came in around thirty thousand.
I, I, so I, I think that does sound kind of high here. I'd like to get more information on this. At thirty thousand dollars? Increase for twelve gauge wire from fourteen gauge and some fireproof plywood seems extremely high. How many square feet of plywood are we talking about here?
Both buildings that are being constructed currently under the approved contract.
Do you happen to know how many square feet?
I
Of the fireproof talking about?
Off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I want to, the, the, the
I, I want to, the, the, the cost of the police plywood non-fire is thirty two dollars a sheet right now. It's very expensive. Plywood's very expensive right now.
It's, you're absolutely right, Councilmember Lenora. Very, very expensive. I wonder if we can just, I do have some concerns about those increases also, what we're talking about. In a commercial setting, usually wiring is set at twelve gauge. I'm, I'm wondering how that would have been designed at fourteen gauge for a commercial setting. And I'm surprised at the amount of extra dollars for the fireproofing the plywood. So I, I, I do personally would like more information on this myself. Take a better look at this and see what we can do to save some more money on this. Would that be possible, Mr. Champus?
I, anything's possible.
I, I mean, I'm like, how much time do you need? I mean, how much time to see what else we can do here to save some dollars and still get this project done?
Well, well, the, the project's been bid. So if we're going to change what the bid is, we kind of got to start all over.
Yeah.
And, and that probably, I mean, it could definitely be done. I'm, I'm not sure we're going to wind up saving anything once we go through another bid process and change the plans and specs that we've already paid for to incorporate the changes to try to save money. So I, I mean, anything's possible.
Well, let me ask you this way. The awarding of this contract has to be done by what date? Is there a, a date? That it has to be accepted by us?
I would say it would need to be awarded at the next meeting. Or I would need to come to you and reject all the bids in the first meeting in October. Because at that point, the bids would be three months old, and they can't hold their prices.
Gotcha. Could you bring us the information about how many square footers of this plywood we're talking about? And what we're looking at as far as the fourteen gauge to twelve gauge wiring?
Sure.
Would that be possible, so we can do that and just see what else? Hopefully, we can find a way to save some money. Is there any other questions from council?
I do have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Mr. Champus, if we were to scrap this, so to speak, as you said, and we were to go ahead and, and put it out for bid again, change some things around, put it out for bid. But there'd be an additional cost associated with that too, and if so, about how much would you think that would be?
There would, about ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
And once again, just a little reminder. This was to give us some female locker room facilities out at the yard, which we do not have. So hopefully, we don't run into a legal problem between now and then. We haven't so far, but that, that obviously is my biggest fear, is that we wind up in a legal mess.
Then why do we not have female locker rooms out there?
Because the facility was built in the seventies, and they didn't think about that back then.
So would there be a way to convert that one locker room? And that way that we can accommodate the female officers as well?
We don't have a locker room at the facility. We have some lockers in each restroom. And they're not ADA accessible at all.
So you're saying that we don't have specifically just a men's locker room? We just don't have designated area for both, one for the men and one for the women, correct?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, I think that's important. We need to point that out to the public as to not confuse them. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, any other questions from council? Could we look at, again, Mike, that you said at the next meeting or the meeting after you would need the time? I'd like to see what we're talking about here.
I'll talk to the consultant in the morning, and we'll see if we can get on the agenda for the next meeting.
Well, we, oh, for the next meeting, what is the date on that? I don't have my calendar in front of me.
October fifth.
October fifth?
No, the next meeting is the twenty first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed the, September twenty first.
Our next meeting is September twenty first.
Give me more time, huh, Councilmember Lenora? Thank you.
And I think Mike said he needed to have the information prior to October fifth, correct, Mike?
All right. Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Is it going to be on for the twenty first? Did I hear that right? It's the twenty first, right?
If we, if we, if we can make a motion for that, yes, but I'm just asking if there's any speaker cards.
September twenty first is the next meeting. And then I think Mike said he needed his answer by October fifth to not lose the pricing. Is that, I think that's what he said.
Thank you.
I have no speaker cards, Mr. Mayor, and no hands raised.
If we can get a motion to, or date certain, September twenty first. I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, sir.
I make a motion that means resolution number twenty twenty one seventy nine to date certain of, what was it?
September twenty first.
Twenty first, September twenty first.
Okay. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. We will move now to F twelve.
This item is an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars from Fund Six, with a bid fund balance of eight point three million dollars to purchase and install a water champ chemical induction mixer and controller for G three engineering for the domestic waste water treatment plant. Recently, there's been a change in management out of the domestic waste water treatment plant. And there have been many surprises. This is one of those surprises. Apparently, our existing pump mixer failed in two thousand and twelve and staff have been hand mixing since then. This has led to higher chemical costs because it's not being done at the correct amounts. And chemicals are being wasted. So the plan is to go ahead and get this piece of equipment back up and running so the plant is running as it was designed to run.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from council?
You have the money, Mr. Champus, in your budget to pay for this?
No.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Is there any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion for this item?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one eighty.
I'm sorry, I said, is twenty twenty one eighty?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. We'll now move on to item F thirteen.
F thirteen will accept, approve the plans and specification and direct staff to receive sealed bids for and appropriate nine hundred fourteen thousand dollars to construct a fire protection system for the electrical room and other fire protection improvements at the domestic waste water treatment plant. As you remember from our previous discussion, our insurance company identified the electrical room as a single point of failure for the system and directed us to get fire protection installed in that room. At the last time before it, the council requested specific changes to the plans and specifications, which were completed, which include automated electrical shut offs if fire is detected, and also a fire alarm system for the entire facility. And for the record, how this place was ever constructed, if one it was constructed without any of this, I do not know. But anyway, the, the goal here is to go ahead and get the plans and specs adopted and approved so we can get off the bid and go ahead and, and get some safety going and reduce our risk out there in domestic waste water treatment.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Mr. Champus, I, I do have some questions, and you know I have concerns about this project. And I'm, I am glad to, to see the fire safety measures in all the additional buildings. I was pretty surprised to find none of the buildings had any monitoring involved in their buildings. So that part, I'm in total agreement with. My question is, if you take out the other suppression system in that room, what does the cost come down to? Do we have that broken out, separated?
Approximately three hundred, three hundred thousand dollars.
So the, that system alone is three hundred and fifty. Do you have a detailed breakout of all this for us?
I, not, not with, I do have it. No, the, the suppression system is a six hundred thousand estimated cost. And once again, it's all just that we don't know what specific costs are, as we saw on that last item. We thought the generator was going to come in at fifty, but it came in at a hundred. And so our engineer consultant has said that the suppression system should be six hundred thousand. And all the alarm improvements and other electrical shut offs will be an additional three hundred or three hundred and fifty on top of that.
Okay. That's the engineer's estimates?
Correct.
And the conversation, the, the last part of this conversation that I wanted to have was, what did the insurance company make? To be clear on what they're asking for, as I pointed out, the, the one issue that I saw was the shut off system with the fire alarm to the electric equipment disconnecting all power, which would kill, of course, all, or de-energize the TV equipment, which would stop as far as the fuel for the fire. But I never got the clarity from the insurance part of this on what they were looking for exactly, other than a, a fire system. Does that mean a fire monitoring? It's, I, I'm still not sold on the system stopping fire. I absolutely believe in the shut off system, very important. And I absolutely believe in the monitoring of each of the buildings, very important. I just wanted a little more clarity on that, but still not comfortable with that part of it.
Isn't the, the shut off system to terminate the ignition source?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm totally in favor of that. Yeah.
The fuel is actually the insulation and the equipment in the room. So if the fire gets started, there needs to be some sort of active suppression to put out the fire so it doesn't spread in the room, correct?
Yeah. The, the electrical equipment, again, the, when there's a short electrical system, that is going to burn because of the electricity moving through it. The equipment itself is not going to, it's obviously not, but it will burn if there's power going through the system. That's why the shut off itself kicks down the power so there's no more, basically, energy going in, continuing to burn. I'm just still not one hundred percent convinced on this other system to shut off the rest of the, or to starve the oxygen to put out any additional fires. I don't see the other parts of that when I walk the facility. And the other question I have for you, if you look at the equipment room, the electrical room, and then the room adjoining to it, how is that being closed off? What is the line for that part, that part of it?
The suppression system includes automated dampers. And there's alarm systems, obviously, that have to be installed to warn anybody in the room that the oxygen is about to go away. And they have so much time to get out before the suppression system kicks in and starts displacing the oxygen. But I will defer to Charlie because I see him at the podium.
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about the, between the two rooms, there's several voids, openings. Is, is that, how's that filled in? How does that keep it from jumping to the next room? I believe it's the pump rings, the next room, wasn't it? I don't remember exactly.
The air depressors rooms on the other side of the block for all.
Is it, but there were some openings between those two walls?
Yes, and then it's sealed as part of the product.
That, that's what I was asking for. That does get sealed up. Okay. The last part, again.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I just wanted to, again, I want to get a little more clarification from the insurance company. Did you ever set up that appointment with the insurance company to be exactly clear on what they're looking for?
I did not, because I have a letter that said that they wanted a fire suppression.
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Rosendez?
Thank you. I know we've been talking about this item for a while. And I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure I know the answer to this, because we've been talking about it for so long. But I just wanted to make, get clarification from you, Mr. Champus. This was included in your budget, correct?
No, we do not include anything like this in the budget. All these extra costs, we've been directed to keep out of the budget so that they can be considered by you, one of the five, at the time of their need. We do not budget any extra money for major repairs in any of the budgets of the city.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from the council members?
I do have something I'd like to say. We have a expert in fire at the podium. I'd like to hear from him. Charlie?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. They did request the fire suppression system, and you got to remember, there's four different types of fires. There's a class A fire, class B fire, class C fire, and a class D fire. A class A is ordinary combustible, you could put out with water. Class B is your flammable liquids. Class C is your energized electrical. As soon as you take away the, the energy or the energized electrical for the class C fire, it turns it into an ordinary combustible, which is a class A fire. Therefore, it keeps burning. The only difference is our fire suppression techniques. So we can't hit it with water while it's charged. We have to use a dry cam. But once the fire is de-energized and shut down, then we'll be able to go extinguish fire because it continues to burn and smolder as a class A fire is ordinary combustible. So just because the power does get shut off, it still continues to burn. I just want to make sure we, we understood that part right there. Just because the power gets shut off, it's still going to continue to burn if the wires are smoldering and everything, the components with that too. And it'll burn right through the walls, and it just follows it through. So I just wanted to add that into that also.
And I'm glad you came up, because I do have a question. You answered part of that question there. And you pointed out, and that was the next part I was going to ask, is the gas system, well, I don't know how long that goes for. And then once that's over, then you'll have a sprinkler system in the building also?
No, that was just, that was just the initial gas to, to, to extinguish the class C, the class C energized electrical fire suppress system. So you kind of want to do it as clean as possible, a clean room extinguishing agent. That way, it doesn't ruin and damage all the equipment that's in there. You want to try to prevent as much damage, minimal damage to that. So they'll hit it with that. That way, it's easy to get it in there fixed without all the water damage that shocks and blows it and spreads the damage more. I mean, if we need to, it's already out and shut off, then we'll need to do what we need to do because power will be secure. So we'll need to shut it off with either a dry cam, we, we'll need to extinguish it with either our dry cams. Or if we need it, we have a hydrant, we'll use copious amounts of water to put it out at a safe distance.
Right. So I guess my question is, how long does the gas system last for?
I, I, they, they calculate it, and it's, 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 however long until the extinguishing agent depends how big the system is. So they should have it for the, that size room that they have it. It'll, it'll hit it and knock it down. But that's why it's important that we put some gas monitors in there too, I believe, and that was part of it too, because it displaces oxygen. So we don't want to have it go off with someone's in the room, because then you'll have another emergency. They have to let them know to get out real quick to displace the oxygen and air it out. So they're calculated to extinguish and then some with that, that, that system. So it's just not the bare minimum. They'll make sure it's out. It's calculated that way. They don't just do the bare minimum. Okay, here's a couple, two A, ten B Cs, that should knock it down. It's a, a sufficient amount.
So the, the other part I'm glad to hear that they added all the other buildings as far as the monitoring. What is your view as far as the future for sprinklers in the other buildings? Or your, your feelings towards, or is that on, in the future? What, what's your concerns?
You, you know, we, we could plan for it, but I, I think we don't do a proprietary system. And I think we should be able to get in there and have someone be able to just bid to put a fire suppression system, a clean room systems in there. And there is agencies, but not use a proprietary system. And we should be able to get it at a, I, I would, I would, I would guess a way decent amount. But it's something we work up to. So right now, the way it is, we're at a good, comfortable position where we'll have it alarmed and monitored. So if anything does happen, we're going to get out there within a few minutes.
I'm definitely glad that we're doing that. That was the one part that caught my attention.
Okay, I'm definitely glad that we're doing that, that was the one part that caught my attention right away. I'm really pleased to hear.
Yeah.
That was included this time, and the shut off system. Without the shut off system, it really doesn't make a difference whether we have a suppression system or not, so.
Yeah, thank you for your support and bringing that to our attention, because it, I, I hadn't known about it either, so I appreciate that too.
Okay, thank you, I really do appreciate that. Councilmember Resendez, do you have a comment? No, Mr. Mayor. Okay, so, thank you again to everyone for answering the question. But I do feel much more comfortable with the system now, knowing it's protecting the entire, uh, treatment plant. Now, did I ask for any, uh, public comment already? City clerk?
Yes, you did, Mr. Mayor, and we have no speaker cards, no speakers.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion on this item?
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash one eight one as presented.
And there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries, we'll move on to item, uh, fourteen.
Item F fourteen is an appropriation of eighty thousand dollars from fund six sixty, which has a funded balance of eight point three million dollars for the repair of the contract basin at the domestic wastewater treatment plant. During a recent inspection, um, some of the cells were empty and I heard cracks that apparently go all the way through the wall into other cells. And that's evidenced by, uh, fluid leaking through the crack, through the wall into the other basin. Um, this is an alarming development, because if it goes unrepaired and the steel inside of the concrete starts to rust, it will expand and it will blow the walls apart, and it will be a major repair. We located a contractor who would be, was responsive, and it was contact, um, engineering. And they, they said it will cost sixty eight thousand to replace or to repair all the cracks in the contract basin. They need to be routed and then routed and then sealed to prevent fluids from getting into the reservoir.
Okay, is there any questions from council?
No.
Nope.
Do we, do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a motion on this item?
I make a motion that we accept resolution number twenty twenty one eighty-two, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Hollister appropriating sixty seven thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars with funds from fund six sixty for the repair of the contract basin, contact basin at the domestic water wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you very much, is there a second? Is the motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries, we'll move to item F sixteen.
Fifteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, F fifteen. Thank you.
So my last item is a resolution, a supplemental appropriation of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars from fund six sixty-two, which is stormwater. It has a, uh, funded amount of four point nine million dollars to complete a stormwater resource plan by the Wallace Group, our on-call engineering consultant when it comes to stormwater. Um, recently, council authorized us to apply for a Prop one stormwater grant from the state of California. And we completed that task, and we applied for five point two million dollars in grant funds. These would be to conduct the, the CDS, or the stormwater filtration unit installations that were required, required to complete, and also will fund portions of the, uh, Pond two stormwater treatment project. In order to qualify for that five point two million in grant money, we need to complete this plan. So that's what the item is for you tonight to consider, is to go ahead and authorize the funds and allow us to execute the task order to complete the required plan to qualify for the grant.
Thank you, any questions from council?
No.
No, just a little bit of clarification. Go ahead, sir, I was here saying that we did get the grant. So we're gonna get the five million dollars or so, that we need to do this in order to, to get the monies.
I did not say that, I said that we have applied for a grant and that we need to do this to get the monies. Um, but if we get awarded the grant and we have not done this, there will not be time to do this in order to get the grant monies. We need to start this project now, because it will take months to complete. And it will be complete just about the time the grant award comes in.
How sure are you, how sure are you that we'll get in the grant?
I, I, there's a couple things I don't ever predict. I never predict how the government's gonna vote, and I never predict the, the grant result. But I will tell you that, um, this, this has strong support with the staff of the Water Board, and that would, this is a, a kind of a post-game shot of project for these grant funds. And both the Wallace Group and the Water Board both have made comments that we are a strong contender for the money.
Any other questions or comments from council?
Nope.
Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
I have no speakers, Mr. Mayor.
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Trumpus, if we can just get a report back. Oftentimes, we, we approve these, um, these grants, and then we don't hear back. So I really appreciate when we do get a report back, whether we got it or not, I appreciate that, thank you.
Definitely. Thank you, is there a motion on this item?
I move that we adopt resolution number twenty twenty dash one eight three as presented.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, we'll move on to item F sixteen.
Good evening, this is Eva from the planning department, can you all hear me?
Yes, Eva.
Fantastic, thank you. Um, item F sixteen, before you tonight, you heard this item a couple council meetings ago in August. This is for the initiation of both pre-zone twenty twenty dash two, as well as the initiation of general plan amendment twenty twenty dash one to include, um, four parcels, three by the applicant, which are, uh, zero one four, one two zero, zero five pi, dash zero six three, as well as dash zero six four. These are up on the northeast and southeast side of the intersection of San Felipe Road and one, Highway one fifty-six, as well as staff recommendation to include a fourth parcel, um, which is APN zero one four, one two zero, zero one four, uh, to be pre-zoned for future annexation, as well as the general plan amendment to include these in our, um, in our general plan of planning area, which they're currently not included. Um, the staff recommended parcel, uh, is recommended to be pre-zoned to M one light industrial zone district. And then the three applicant parcels are recommended to be pre-zoned into the industrial business park zone district. Um, if you have any specific questions about the project that I can clarify or recall for you, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, is there any questions or comments from the council?
No.
No.
I, I do have some comments. I, I, I did finally receive this set of plans or the, uh, draft of their, the concepts, which looked, actually looked pretty good. I, I did like the, the concepts and ideas. The only concern I have, we still have some issues because the tax sharing agreement was not finalized for commercial properties, so that still needs to happen. Uh, and there's some other issues, I think what we're, what we should be doing is set up a study session to get more clarity on this project, as far as what can, can't be done from within our plans. And more importantly, how are we gonna finish on this tax sharing agreement that was not finished um, while there was discussions going on with the tax sharing agreement? Because without that agreement in place, there was nothing we could do. City manager, do you have any recommendations on that?
Well.
I have a comment on the tax sharing agreement, it was specifically left out for commercial because it was gonna be on a case-by-case basis, a negotiation with the county on a case-by-case basis. So tax sharing agreement was completed for what the task was that we were assigned.
But unfortunately, when we're doing it a case-by-case basis, we're gonna find ourselves in a case like this, and that's not what we want to be in. I think we need to have those discussions now to, to move to the next step. As I said, I, I did like the concept, I liked the ideas, but the reality is we need to get this tax sharing part of this worked out. So we move to the next steps.
Is the tax sharing agreement not at the time of annexation? This is an initiation for a, a pre-zoning, an initiation for an expansion, a degree of influence. So it's not exactly right at the heart of the subject yet. You, you don't, you don't even wanna proceed with an initiation?
Well, and, but that's kind of the problem. We kinda wanna make sure we're getting everything lined up. And so if we move forward with this, there's no holdups for this developer on his commercial property. And that's, uh, again, I think very important that we understand that. Otherwise, we're gonna find ourselves in a situation where we're making promises, and if for some reason the county does not want to negotiate an agreement, this developer on this commercial property will be stuck between, in the middle here. I think this is something we should be really, again, working with. The county can finish off these negotiations and get them done completely, so we're not having to do this every time there is a, another parcel that wants to come into the city for commercial or industrial development.
So, so it is, is there no commercial on this project, correct?
No. No, there, I mean, they have, their plans would be two hotels, uh, conference center, uh, restaurant, uh, potential fuel station, so there are different retail aspects, so. Um, but the, the issue would be, without any kind of approval, we're not really sure what we would be negotiating at this time.
They have to have the conditional use permit to go with commercial use and industrial, so that's also another review.
Correct.
I think this goes back to, again, the, uh, the conversation of having an agreement for annexing in commercial or industrial properties, so that we can move forward on projects and not have developers like this, they're trying to build a commercial property, have to wait for that agreement to happen. I'm still concerned that we're moving forward, but again, we don't have an agreement with the county. And as I said before, that we should have this already, but we need to find a way to.
I think, I think it's a little bit different animal when you're talking about commercial industrial versus residential, because it really hinges on what type of development that they're gonna, they're gonna put in there. It's not just a straight same thing as it is in residential, at least that's the way I understand it. That, that it could be different, different things.
Yeah.
So how are you gonna do a standardized agreement? How will you do a standardized agreement? They really should be, they really should be negotiated on the merits of that project what they're proposing. That has a bearing on it.
Well, and then the past agreement was basically a hundred percent on commercial industrial. So we need to just figure out where we're at again, and make sure we're, uh, working with the county to get this finalized as we had before on these types of projects. So I think it's important that we do get something, some sort of an agreement in place, so it's more fair for these developers. Because I, again, I, I liked that this project, I thought, not a bad concept. I liked what they're proposing, where we at with these other steps. And to find that we're not there yet because of this, uh, locking agreement, I think puts us at a disadvantage, definitely hurts the developers' timeline on this. So I'd like to see what we can do to set a meeting soon, city manager, with the, uh, county. And I would say you should probably be the one negotiating. I know we couldn't agree very well in the past, but I think if you can go in and, uh, try to work up something with the county, finalize, uh, this part of the agreement for annexing the commercial industrial areas, it would be very helpful, so we can just, again, move forward and move much quicker on future projects and on this project. And then again, a study session to make sure what we can do and can't do, and what we wanna see happen there before we move to it further. Is that something we can do in, um, by the meeting the first week of August or October?
Yes, that's something we can do, but I, uh, Abraham also wanted to address some issues that you brought up also, so real quick.
If that's okay, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Abraham Prado, Development Services Planning Manager. Just wanted to address, um, that with this item, as council member, um, Carolyn Noor, uh, indicated, this would be for the initiation of the pre-zone, as well as the general plan initiation, which the general plan initiation requires unanimous four, four votes, as you well know. And so if, if approved tonight, then, um, at this point, we would be able to start, uh, it would actually provide the applicant the opportunity to start the environmental process, um, which, which that alone in itself can take potentially at minimum one year, if not, if not more. Uh, and it just really depends, um, we, we know, we've done environmental documents that, you know, can be as fast as sixteen weeks, approximately four months. But for something like this, um, the nature of this project, which is very involved with, with the pre-zoning, with the general plan amendment and future commercial developments. We, we normally, we normally do the environmental review at, at full buildout. In this case, with an industrial business park, uh, uh, pre-zoning that we would be recommending. But, um, it, it's, uh, it is very, very involved, so we don't anticipate this, uh, environmental review going any, any sooner than, than one year. So just wanted to throw that out there, just to, to, um, indicate the, uh, the process of, of just the initiation part of it. But nonetheless, you know, the comments that you indicated as well, Mr. Mayor, regarding the property tax exchange agreement, are, are very valid in regards to, um, the actual pre-zone, as you, as you all, um, are informed and know about as well. So just, just wanted to throw that out there, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, thank you.
Abraham, I do have some questions. On this, if we go ahead and vote, we get a unanimous four to zero vote on this tonight, there's still time to talk to the county about tax sharing, plenty of time?
The, the time that would be required to do the, the actual, uh, SEQA work per the California Environmental Quality Act, yes, there, there will be at minimum, at minimum four months. But again, um, because of the nature of this project, I don't anticipate this process being any less than a year.
Okay, so there's no reason that we can't, I'm still asking, thank you, Mr. Resendez. So we could go ahead, like I said, we could vote on this, there's plenty of time, but it is important that this be voted on tonight.
For, for purposes of getting started with the environmental review, that is correct. With the no vote, or with the, uh, even with the three, three one vote in favor of it, the environmental document cannot get started, because it would not, it would not be approved. So just for purposes of, of getting the environmental done, or, or at least kicked off, that, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, this is for the city attorney, uh, Mr. City Attorney, I have a question. If we do go ahead and annex this land in, and I think it does need a, for a general plan amendment, it does need a four zero vote tonight. If we do go ahead and, um, annex this land in, is there any potential, if we change, or if the city council changes their mind, that we might be, um, putting ourselves up for possible litigation?
Well, councilmember Resendez, as I, as I understand your question, it is if, if you were to vote this in four zero and the city were to change its mind in the future, would the city be subject possibly to litigation? Is that, did I understand you correctly?
Exactly, would the developer possibly be able to sue the city for anything?
Well, I would hate to go into any details regarding, uh, what, what a developer could or could not sue the city for, but there's, there's always a risk of litigation, especially when, when one party or another, uh, interprets what was or was not done by a city council differently, if that makes sense. I realize that's a little waffly, but that's probably about as far as I'm comfortable going in, in open session. Councilmember Resendez.
I understand, thank you for your, um, for your honesty with that question. So I, I too did get the plans, thank you, um, to the developers that sent that to, to me. It does seem like, um, like a really nice project, it's got a lot of potential for our community. I think this is definitely something worth considering to, um, to do a general plan amendment and to annex it. But however, I don't wanna rush into anything, just given our. But however, I don't want to rush into it. Just given our history with, you know, being threatened to be sued by developers and whatnot, I think if we take that first step where we may open ourselves up to get sued, and I want to do this the right way and make sure that essentially we cross all our Ts and all Is. So, I really like the project. I appreciate the developers reaching out to me. And I look forward to further discussion more. But I'm not in any hurry to do it. That's for sure.
Thank you, sir. I think, city manager, Abraham, what I've tried to point out is, if we start this in this direction, for example, they start doing environmental studies and so on and so on, then we get to the point of finalizing the tax sharing agreement, but we cannot come to an agreement, does the project get built in the city?
My understanding, Mr. Mayor, and this may also be more towards a legal question, is that my understanding is that if there is no agreement, property tax exchange agreement, then it cannot be annexed. It's my understanding, right? And it would have to be annexed in order for it to be built in the city. They can proceed with the unincorporated area, being that it's currently in the unincorporated area. But citywide, in order for it to be built in the city and get its proper entitlements, it would, it would need, there would need to be a property tax exchange agreement in place. I defer that more towards the city attorney because it's more of a legal thing. However, it, yeah, so that's my understanding of the project. If SEQA is completed, at this time, the intent is to review at full buildout of the industrial business park pre-zoning that we are recommending as that for this parcel or these four parcels to have. Pending approval of the SEQA document and, you know, pending that the property tax exchange agreement is approved and pending that it's annexed, at that point, we actually, we actually look at it once more, once we get the project specific. So, in case things change from now to then, then at that time, we review it once again, project specific. Of course, we use all the SEQA document that has been prepared and hopefully by that time adopted. But we look at it once more, and if we have to do, for example, an amendment to the traffic study because, you know, the routes are more specific now, or amendment to any of the other sections of the environmental document, at that point, we would do. And we would not bring it before the planning commission and/or the city council without making sure that we have that additional SEQA information prepared for at the project specific stage.
Correct. And that is my concern. I think, as Councilmember Resendez brought up in the past, there's been different deals that weren't complete and then threats of lawsuits and finger pointing and different things. I think it's very important, as I said before, to get this agreement done. So it's more fair to the developer, in this case, commercial industrial developer, to know what he's dealing with upfront, that it's a reality. So for an example, if that agreement had been done in the past, then tonight we'd be in a situation of knowing that it is actually realistic to get this project done. And all it would take is our votes to move it to the next step. My concern is, we take it to the next step here and then find ourselves in the situation where we can't get the tax share agreement put together, and a lot of going back and forth with no results. And leaves us in a bind and people, again, threatening lawsuits or people angry about promises that aren't being kept. So I think it's very important that we, as Councilmember Resendez pointed out, let's get the Ts crossed and the Is dotted. Let's get this done in a way that makes sense. And it's, again, it's fair for these developers, for this commercial property. Again, I think it was a good proposal that we looked at. But without the tax sharing agreement, we're going to find ourselves in trouble. And I'd like to have, again, the city manager go back and speak with the county and try to get some meetings together, work this out. And I would say, bring this back. Hopefully, we get an agreement before October nineteenth. Just give it enough time to get this thing finalized as far as the tax share agreement. And by tax share agreement, I mean a agreement for future projects also. So we're not one by one by one each time a commercial property wants to come into city. We can have an agreement, just like was done for the residential component. That was done as a whole for any new projects coming in to the city. That deal is already done. And I want to see the same thing happening with the commercial side of this. So again, we're not spending time wondering if we're going to have an agreement or not by the time these types of projects are finalized. It's only fair to the developer for them to know they're investing their money and that money will not be lost, wasted, if we cannot come to an agreement. So I would request that the city manager, again, have some meetings, set some timelines, and let's bring this back. Hopefully, you can have an agreement by October nineteenth. So we can vote on this. And at that point, I'm absolutely willing to support something like this. But I want to see that we have the basics taken care of first, so we're not getting ahead of ourselves that we haven't passed.
Can I make one last point, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to point out that I think this council has approved every commercial business or industrial business that has come across us on the dais. I don't remember a time that we didn't. So I think we're very pro-business. When it comes to residential, obviously, it's a whole different story. We've got a split council. Everybody knows that. But this is kind of a big dip in, and I don't want to rush through it. If anything, like you said, it's just going to get us to be able to lay a strong foundation for us moving forward. But this is, it requires a general plan amendment. It's a four-fit vote. It's a lot of potential. So I definitely favor that, and I appreciate you pointing that out. Thank you.
City manager?
Oh, wait, I would like to point something out. I think that we're getting past something here. We're not talking about annexing this property tonight. We're talking about initiating the pre-zoning. We have, we could initiate the pre-zoning. We can talk to the county. We can work out a tax share agreement. And then when this comes, this project comes back to us for approval of annexation, all that will be in order. We, if we postpone this tonight, we're postponing the developer for another month or two. We've already lost one commercial development because of the lack of whatever. They decided to go to San Juan Batista. I really don't want to see this one leave either. So I don't see why we cannot initiate, vote a four zero vote to initiate pre-zoning. And before it comes back as annexation, we have the agreement with the county on the tax share. And we just, everything just moves ahead. We roll. Because if we stop this, if this does not get to the initiation of pre-zoning tonight, you're postponing the developer, and that's not a good thing. Not a good thing at all. They've been waiting for a long time to get to this place. If we postpone it, they might just pull out.
I'm just not very comfortable with the next one. I thank you for your feedback.
Thank you. And let's go back to, I don't know what company you're talking with that pulled out of building in Hollister for San Juan Batista. But again, this is the beginning of a zoning into annexation into the city. And again, again, the foundational parts of this are still missing, as I've talked about for years about these issues. And how important it is to make sure we have everything in place so these types of issues don't happen. If this developer were to move forward and we started having all these conversations, the studies are done, and for some reason, the county decides, no, they don't want it, let this land be annexed into the city, then where is the developer at? We just need to do the basic, simple process that should be done. It should have been done a long time ago, as I said. When the negotiations started happening about tax sharing, I worried about some of these things. Making sure these things needed to be addressed. And I was taken off of that committee, even though I had spent a year before having these conversations. So I knew full well what was at stake as far as not only residential, but commercial industrial. And unfortunately, only half of the negotiations were done. We need to wrap up the other parts because any developer of commercial industrial property should know that if that property is there, it can be annexed into the city without a problem because those steps have already been taken. And we can help that developer move along much quicker to get this project or her project done. So these are our basic steps, crossing the Ts, dotting the Is. Before we do any more pre-zones, we need to make sure we have something that can actually be annexed in and avoid any more threats of lawsuits because something couldn't be delivered later. So I'm just asking that the city manager should take the time to meet with the CAO of the county, discuss sharing, bring it back October ninth. Hopefully, a deal is worked out that we can start moving forward and we can be confident from that point on that any commercial, industrial, retail complex can be annexed and we have the agreements in place. That is good planning. That's what we need to be doing.
That's not good planning.
Mr. City Manager, is that something you can do?
That's definitely something I can do. I'll call the county tomorrow.
So if we bring this, move this to a date starting of October nineteenth, would that give you enough time to make this, did that happen?
I do have speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just asking the city manager if that gives them that time.
I will do my best to make sure that that's enough time, and I would like it to be brought back, so that's fine.
Well, we have the office in here, so I think you can do it. So let's go ahead and move to any speakers that we do have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joe Giacalone?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I represent Bill Christopher, the owner of the project, as you all know. We, I'm just going to go down some of the points that I have written down. I will have a letter here in the morning from Bill Christopher absolving the city of Hollister from any lawsuits regarding this project, number one. Number two, we've already met with the county. The county is the one that told us to come and meet with you guys to work out a tax sharing agreement. And we've had a couple meetings with Abraham and Brett about that. Your existing tax sharing agreement with the county, it doesn't need to be rewritten from scratch. It just needs to be amended to add the percentages that the county and the city are willing to divide between each other. So, I'm not sure, Mr. Mayor, your concerns are needed regarding being sued and not having the agreement. You guys have an agreement. It just, it just needs, just needs to be tweaked a little bit. And, you know, I agree with Vice Mayor Spencer. Every time we come here and we hear stuff like this, we lose another month. And we're at a critical stage with some of our potential people that are looking at this project. And I'm just scared if we come here next month, even though we get this agreement and the city and the county get the agreement worked out, there's going to be something else that everyone wants tweaked. And I go back to the fact that this is nothing more than allowing us to fill out and submit the paperwork and the drawings and the project description for the pre-zoning and annexation agreements. And our civil engineer, who's RJA, who's a very respectable company, it'll take us two to three months just to get, once we fill out that application. If we fill it out tomorrow, it's going to take us two to three months to get everything designed and filled out. The drawings that I went over with everyone, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Resendez, that's a conceptual drawing. That isn't the drawing and the information that'll be submitted to the city for the pre-zoning annexation. So I'm not sure what else to say, but I can guarantee you this. Mr. Christopher has no intentions of suing the city. He's well vested in this city. And I can tell you right now, representing him, that the Christopher family would not ever sue this city over something like this. So I hope you guys can vote on it tonight so that we don't lose another month. Because we're, I'm, we're at a very, very critical stage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giacalone.
Mark Medina? One more. Mark Medina?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, thank you for allowing me to speak. First of all, I'll speak to the tax sharing agreement. The tax sharing agreement was completed. It was voted on three to two. It was Councilmember Carol Lenore, Councilmember Honor Spencer, and Councilmember Marty Richmond. And the people against it were the mayor and Resendez. So, it was completed, and we did say, in, if you read the agreement, and if you can, you can read it and look at it, it says case by case basis. So this is exactly what this is intended to do. So with the, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if you're hurt because you were taken off the committee and you felt that this was not the right way to do it. But it was voted on, and it's sitting as a, as a document, which needs to be upheld by the city attorney. You need to look at that and make sure that it is a case by case basis. It makes perfect sense to me. I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let me explain, Mr. Giacalone, thank you for speaking tonight. I agree, Christopher family are very reputable people, and I appreciate it. And I did appreciate you giving us the information, and I do like the project. Unfortunately, Mr. Medina, the problem is, a case by case basis does not mean there's an agreement. It means it's a case by case by case basis. And made that very clear, how important it was to get this taken care of. So we have an agreement. Otherwise, we have a case by case by case basis for residential. But somehow, that wasn't case by case by case. That was for everything. And I want to make sure we get ourselves in a situation here for commercial, industrial, retail, that we have an agreement that we're all agreeing on, and we can move forward. So we don't have to go case by case by case by case. It's only fair for those that want to develop commercial, industrial property, as it was for those that were developing residential properties. That being said, this puts us in the situation of case by case basis. So what is?
Which we voted on and approved.
Hang on a second.
We voted on and approved that process.
This means?
You can't backtrack now.
Councilman Lenore, please. This means what I'm saying. We do not have a tax sharing agreement for this property. And I would like the city manager to take the time to meet with the CAO and get an agreement done for this commercial, industrial part of our community. So we don't have to, again, go case by case by case.
But that's what was voted on.
This is going to take much longer for these commercial, industrial developers. What they need to know is that we already have an agreement and they can move forward. Just exactly like the residential developers wanted to have in their hands. It's very important for these types of businesses to know that their annexation is solid because the agreement's already in place. So, all we're asking for here is for the city manager to have those meetings with the county. Let's get this tax sharing agreement worked out and done. So these gentlemen can move on with their project. And as I said, I already thought this project was pretty good. But without a tax sharing agreement, we don't have anything. And we need to start understanding, laying down the foundational issues. So we don't have these conversations anymore. We can plan more thoroughly for our future without having to get bogged down in negotiations by case by case by case basis. That's not the way we should be doing business. We should have this thing worked out already. And I'm going to ask again, that city manager should step back, meet with the CAO and hopefully have the agreement they can bring back before October nineteenth meeting. So we can move on to the next step. I do think this is a project we should be exploring.
The floor, please. The floor, please.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Lenore.
You're violating the agreement right there. We've already decided, the majority of the council has already decided. Protocol number five also states that when the majority of the council votes on an item, the other two need to follow along. That's what the protocol states for number five. We've already stated, we settled the residential tax sharing agreement, and that was what we were supposed to be doing. And we said that we would do a case by case. You, we voted on that. This is that you were in the minority. So the majority has already said that it's going to be a case by case basis. So the majority has already said that it's going to be a case by case basis. What don't you get?
Go ahead, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This is regards to Mr. Giaccoloni's comments. Thank you for coming up here and I appreciate that you dropped off that letter from Mr. Christopher and I don't have any doubt that you, as you stated, that they do have the community's best interests in mind, but if that property were to exchange hands for any reason, then I think that letter would probably be no longer valid, I would say. So that's something that I'm a little bit concerned about. We're elected to essentially protect the city's interests, so we haven't had very good luck in doing that when we were in the minority of the council. My other thing is, you made a statement about essentially that the county is willing to sit down and to discuss this tax sharing agreement, so I'm happy to hear that. However, I did not hear that. I got from the board supervisor that came up, he essentially said it's a case by case basis. That doesn't really give me the same type of, I would say, hope that you were telling me. So I'm like, at this point, it's obvious that we're not going to have a consensus. At this point, if we could just follow the direction of the mayor, have him to city manager and see you sit down and have a discussion, that's probably what I'd almost come to with. And if Mr. Christopher does in fact have the city's interests in mind, then he wouldn't mind waiting just one more month for us to figure that out. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. And I do want to again remind the council, there is no agreement for tax sharing on this property. That is the problem of having a case by case by case negotiation. It's flawed and it's bad planning.
It was, it was a three to two vote. You lost. Three to two vote, you lost.
Unfortunately, the community lost because he didn't finish the negotiation.
Your lucky Marty, your lucky Marty isn't sitting here right now.
We're going to go back.
We're going to take care of you already.
I believe if the county is really serious about this, they'll be willing to sit down with our city manager and wrap this negotiation up.
Delay, 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 delay.
So again, we don't have any more case by case basis. We have solid decision making and solid planning, which is critically important to our future. So we don't keep just doing things one by one by one. We need to have a bigger, better plan and we can do this. So I'm going to ask again for the city manager to go back, have these conversations and bring it back to us by the October 19th meeting if he can get a negotiation and a deal with the county. Okay? So is there a motion to, for a date starting?
I'd like to delay the motion because I don't really like it.
Yeah, I don't like it either.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
I don't really understand what.
Well, you're delaying the project, why don't we just delay the vote?
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I propose that we move, I think this is the right one, resolution number 2020-184 to a date starting of October, what was it?
19th.
19th?
Yes. In the motion?
So you want the city manager to go and negotiate with the county and you keep your fingers out of it? Got it? Keep your fingers out of it. You represent yourself and only yourself.
This is why I said I have the city manager.
You don't represent me or Honor, you represent yourself and only yourself. So when the city manager starts, you keep your input out of it unless it's in a public meeting. Thank you.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I am the mayor, so I.
Unfortunately, you have the same power as I do, sorry.
That's probably all do. So there's a motion, is there a second to have the meeting, the date starting of October 19th and have the city manager go back and negotiate with the county? I will second that motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Again, you win and we protest, aye.
And I protest this, but aye.
Motion carries for, oh, thank you very much. We'll now.
You're not welcome.
Item S17.
Oh, wow. Didn't he vote to annexes and now he's backing out?
Thank you. Evening. Item S17 was continued from the August 17th city council meeting to tonight's meeting by a tie vote. This is a resolution of the city council to approve an annexation agreement for the Woodall property, A P N 019120005, and allowing for the signing and executing of the annexation agreement. The Woodall property, as you're all aware, is a little over nine acres north of Quinovista Road and west of Lower Road, or west of, west, west side of Lower, excuse me. And so tonight, staff is recommending that the city council adopt this resolution to approve the annexation and allow the agreement to be executed.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from council? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Christine Kemp is going to do a PowerPoint presentation and then I have two speakers. So actually, yeah, two. So Christine, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, give us just a second to pull up your presentation. Okay, we're ready. Go ahead.
Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Christine Kemp and appearing on behalf of two Woodall project applicants, as I said before, the state law, housing laws mandate that your council follows staff's recommendation and approve the Woodall annexation agreement and initiating the annexation proceedings. As the mayor pointed out in the last discussion, all the foundational parts are here for this project. Votes by three, please. The housing actions are, the two actions before you tonight are necessary for the Woodall housing project. The housing, Woodall housing development project entitlements, top line, Mr. Vickle are for 98 single-family detached dwelling units on the Woodall property. The Woodall project applicant has expended over $200,000 in fees and costs associated with the Woodall housing development project, including property pre-zoning, mapping, project recallers and sequence analysis, as the mayor said, and the project as well. It's fair to the developer to know that he's not wasting his money when he's gone through this much of a process and has all of the building blocks in place. Slide five, please. The Woodall project site has city general plan designation of medium density residential. The general plan actually identifies it as a priority infill area. The project site has historically been used for an auto restoration business. It's not zoned for or used for agricultural purposes and the site is within the city's sphere of influence. Slide seven. Your project, your city council, again, the foundational elements are all in place. The city council has initiated pre-zone, they've done a name and declaration for the Woodall housing development project as well as the property re-zone to facilitate the housing development project and the pre-zoning has been approved by your city council for the housing development project. The negative declaration for the Woodall project in the pre-zone said that the development of the project site is a logical expansion of the city consistent with the general plan. The environmental effects of the population growth associated with the proposed project are evaluated throughout this initial study and all impacts can be mitigated to less than significant level. The initial study for the Woodall project also analyzed the impact of 109 houses. The Woodall project is proposing 98, well within the number of units analyzed in the negative declaration. The city of Hollister is an affected city under S B 330 and the Housing Accountability Act as well as the Housing Crisis Act apply to the city. The Housing Crisis Act prohibits the city from downzoning parcels, imposing the authority and restrictions on development and capping the housing number of units that can be approved. Under state Housing Accountability Act, the city cannot deny a housing development project that is consistent with the general plan unless it finds there's adverse impacts to health, safety and no feasible mitigation. As I mentioned before, there's been a negative declaration, negative declaration, and that mitigated negative declaration for the Woodall housing development project found there's no substantial evidence in light of the whole record before the lead agency, which was the city, that the project with mitigation measures may have a significant impact on the environment. The housing laws apply not only to housing developments but required land use approvals for the building permit. The two resolutions before you tonight to approve the Woodall annexation agreement and initiate the lapco proceedings for the Woodall property are necessary for the Woodall housing project development. The city has twice been told by the state that it's violating the state law in two letters, finding that the city's both management program as well as pending, as inaction on stalling and blocking pending housing applications violate the state law. The two resolutions before the city council facilitate the housing development project, comply with the general plan and zoning standards and criteria adopted by your city council and there are no unmitigated impacts. The city's split vote on these resolutions continues to be a de facto denial and violation of state law. The city must approve the Woodall project within five hearings. You've already had four on this, this is the fifth hearing. And also, it's become evident that continuing to pursue this, continuing with the split vote becomes a futile, futile action and also resulting in a failure to move the project forward. We need these resolutions passed to facilitate the housing development project, violating the state housing laws, as I mentioned before, its potential fines, awards of attorney's fees, and additionally, by failing to take the legally required action to approve the Woodall property entitlements to facilitate the housing development project, the city is causing unreasonable and unnecessary delay and continuing losses and damage to the project proponent. The city is a violation of state law and the city council does not affirmatively vote to approve the Woodall property annexation resolutions to facilitate the construction of the Woodall housing development project. And as the mayor said, all of the zoning blocks and elements for this housing development project have been in place and you're required to move it forward unless you, otherwise you're violating the state law. Thank you.
We got lost on this.
Hi, Abraham. Attorney said all the legal stuff, so I'll just cover the easy stuff. The Woodall property has historically been used as an auto restoration business and is not zoned for or used for agriculture for decades. Is immediately across the street from the elementary school and public park and other housing and all public services are to this site. The property has no well to supply ag water and is supplied only by domestic water from the city water line in front of the property and adjacent to it. The mediation, the, I'm sorry, the secret work is complete and the project's completely cleared. There are no negative impacts from this project. That's was the finding of it and the findings were adopted by the city council. The zoning, pre-zoning was done and adopted by the city council and is adopted for the city council as medium density, which is what this project is going to be. And by the way, medium density gets, uses half the land or half the agricultural land, if that's what you want to talk about, half the agricultural land per house that the standard single family uses. It's one of the reasons why we pursue these kinds of developments. Anyway, our attorney already spoke. Do you have a question?
Mr. Vickle, when the property was voted on to pre-zone, do you know what the vote was?
Four zero at the planning commission and at the, I don't remember the city council, but it was, I know initially, the initial, like the hearing you're having now on the, on the commercial property, I know that at that time, the mayor voted in favor of going forward, which is what we based our decision to go forward and start spending all the money and fees and time and effort to, to process this. But apparently, the mayor has changed his mind. But you know, the problem is, is that it's way too late to be changing your mind. It's not fair to us, it's not fair to the Woodalls. The Woodalls are really nice people and I don't know whether I'm a nice person or not, but I haven't done anything to deserve this kind of treatment and the Woodalls certainly haven't done anything to deserve this kind of treatment. It's just not fair what's, what's being done.
You're right. Thank you, Mr. Bickel.
Scott Stotler?
Speakers?
Yes, one more, Mr. Mayor, on this item.
Good evening, members of the council. I just wanted to take a chance, I had, was going to do this a few meetings ago. I can tell you as a character reference, Hugh Bickel is a known developer since the sixties and seventies when he started at San Jose. This gentleman here, I can tell you, takes pride in building homes for people as first time home buyers. He'll tell you story after story of young school teachers not being able to qualify, him helping them out get their first house. I can tell you right now, as far as developers, I do architecture for a living, I've worked, seen Hugh Bickel's projects and worked with him for years, not on this project at all, but I just wanted to give him a character reference and this is a gentleman that plays by the rules, he always has, and he's a hard worker and he loves what he does. And anyway, that was it. I just wanted to give you a character reference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
I have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there a motion on this item?
I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-186.
One more comment?
Oh, one more. One more comment? Oh.
I want to be very clear, hopefully I'm not yelled and screamed or interrupted.
May, maybe, maybe not.
My position and the mayor's position on this item has never changed. It has not changed. What changed was, we were sitting on a three to two council for the last two years, three of whom were very much for residential growth and approved lots of homes. And what changes, unfortunately, not to speak ill of anybody, but that one vote passed away. They're gone. Now we're in a deadlock and just like developers do for these growths, these residential growths, they're taking full advantage of our current situation, which is really sad and despicable. The public, especially in this district, are sick and tired.
Of you.
Of residential growth. They're sick and tired of council members being appointed to the council by their friends to approve more houses and they're sick and tired of council members who think they can run for mayor because they're backed by developers and they had a majority of the vote. Look at you now. And anybody else that is pro-growth is going to end up just like you two. So don't come up here and side with developers and put on a show for your friends.
You're putting the show on.
You failed the community and it shows and it's an embarrassment. Anybody else that sides with you is going to be on the same pages you and I am so sickened that the developers are taking full advantage of somebody who passed away to try to tear us apart. This was the last residential project that you three approved in this city. And that's all I got to say about that.
Wait, let me, let me.
No, just let it go, he's a moron.
Roland, Ignacio, can I say something, please?
Yes, you can, Vice Mayor.
We're not going to go back and forth.
No, I'm not.
You just let him, now you're going to let her, Vice Mayor.
Do you have a comment about the project? Go ahead.
But Roland says whatever he wants, we're all crooks up here? Get, get real, Mayor, get real.
Okay. Mrs. Spencer, do you have a comment?
I'm not Ms. Spencer, I'm Vice Mayor Spencer.
But Vice Mayor.
And I will say something as Vice Mayor now. I will not sit on this dais and be slammed and bullied by a council member. I expect you as the mayor to say something for all of us. You voted for this, a five vote, five zero vote to pre-zone this and now you've backed out. You have allowed your friend, Mr. Resendiz, to bully and call names and.
Accuse us of being under the take, seriously? Who tells me what to do? I do what's right with the staff report. How dare you, Councilman Resendiz? Accuse me of being some kind of crook. Nobody takes advantage of me ever.
Okay, wait, I'm not finished, Ignacio, I'm not finished. I have sat here, I have sat here, I have.
Why don't you speak? Go ahead.
I am speaking right now. I have sat here for the last two meetings, keeping my mouth shut because I do not want to get angry anymore. because I do not want to get angry anymore. I'm tired of being angry. I don't say anything bad about Roland, and I don't say anything bad about you, but I'm tired of him doing it to me and you doing nothing to call him on the carpet. You talk about professional. You talk about sickened, and you talk about embarrassment. Roland Resendez, you are the biggest embarrassment this town has ever seen. You are an embarrassment to this council. You're an embarrassment to this community.
What, what person had a talk?
I wasn't censured. Hey, who was censured?
Roland Resendez.
Okay. All right, everyone. Well, we're talking about different items now.
Well, you shouldn't have brought, you brought that crap here.
Your opinions, and going back to your question, Vice Mayor Spencer, about my vote originally. You know, back in 2015, or whatever that was, I had conversations with everybody about how important was the plan for this community so we could start doing things correctly. We didn't know exactly what this project was about, but that whole area was important to zone it correctly, make sure we had the amenities we needed, and so on. But guess what happened? There was no effort after that to do anything, to update the general plan, to make the improvements we needed. So I could learn that approving pre-zoning is a mistake. And I voted no on the final zoning on this for one simple reason.
Get your votes.
We did not have a good plan put together. All that's been done in this community since then is slap in new developments without doing the projects we need to do to make our community better as a whole. And that is my stance. And this is why it took over five years to get this general plan moving along. And even with that, we only have three members of the five because we did not agree with it.
Because you hijacked the general plan committee.
But I can tell you all, all that if we do these steps as a general plan and plan correctly, we can get through this without all this arguing and bickering back and forth, and we can do things right and grow at the right pace so it benefits our community as a whole rather than a few individuals. And that's just what needs to be changed. And that's why I did vote no on the final annexation of this project. And this is why I'm gonna continue to vote no until we have a better plan in place that the community as a whole can support. And I'll go back to, is there a motion on this item?
Yeah, I move that we adopt resolution 2020-186 as presented.
Thank you. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Aye. Motion does not carry. We're gonna move to item F-18.
Thank you, and I'd just like to ask our city attorney if item, the previous item was continued because decided it was tied, so just ask for clarification if I might, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly, I didn't, I couldn't quite hear all of that, but I believe you were asking if item 18 should be withdrawn, given that it's dependent on item 17, and it did not pass. Is that correct?
Uh, yes. Item F-18, I'll just introduce it as the lack, a recommendation to LACCO, to apply to LACCO for the annexation of the Woodill property. Because item F-17 was tied, I'd just like to ask for clarification on the result of F-17 because they are tied together.
I think she's asking if it is being tabled to the next council meeting or
It's the second, yeah, that's it.
That's the fourth.
That was the fifth.
Item F-18 at this point is essentially moot. So the city council still can discuss it if it wants to, but I don't know that there would be any motion that would be appropriate at the end of that conversation. And of course
We should do like all the other meetings. It's a separate item, requiring a separate motion.
It, it is a separate item. I was just curious about the result of it, so
We need to hear it.
The staff would not recommend that the council send an item to LACCO without an annexation agreement. So I, I would recommend that you adopt this resolution if the other item was adopted.
But it wasn't. Okay. Yeah, we know. We know.
Thank you. Okay. Is there any questions or comments from council? Do we have any speaker cards on this item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Hugh Bickel? Oh, he left. Christine Kemp, you have your hand up. Please go ahead.
The mayor and council, I would ask that you take a vote on this motion. Uh, we'd like to have a clear record of the action on the request to initiate the LACCO proceeding.
Okay, do we have any other speakers?
Namaste, Mayor.
Is there a motion on this item? I make a motion that we deny resolution number 2020-186. There's a motion. Is there a second? I will second the motion. All in favor? All right. Aye. Against?
No.
No.
That motion does not carry.
I want to clarify that the last item, I inadvertently used the wrong number. I meant to say 2020-185 instead of 186.
That is noted, Carol. Yes, I have that. Thank you.
And I would just point out, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I would just point out that because the last motion was to deny the item and that motion failed, it's certainly open for a different motion from a member of the council.
Well, what's the point?
Is there another, is there another motion?
Yeah, I move that we adopt resolution number 2020-186 as presented.
Thank you. Those motions are a second?
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Aye.
Okay.
Motion does not carry. We're gonna move now to item F-19.
Thank you. My final item tonight is a resolution which will direct staff to make an application to the local agency information commission, LACCO, for the city to provide sewer service outside of its jurisdiction, but within its sort of influence to the property located at APN 019310009, also identified as 1735 Santa Ana Road. This item came before you, abooed at the June 15, 2020 meeting, and it's before you again tonight. And the city received a request for out-of-jurisdiction services on May 11, 2020. And for this parcel, it's about 21 acres, and there is a proposal in San Vito County for subdivision of this property into 41 lots, which would construct 40 single-family homes as well as have a sewer water detention parcel. And at this time, staff would recommend that the city council consider the adoption of a resolution to provide sewer service out of its jurisdictional boundaries to APN 019310009. And with the adoption of a resolution, that would also correct us as staff to apply to LACCO for services, if that's the council's desire tonight.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you need to clarify the issue on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item came before the city council, I believe it was in June of 2020, and, and due to a question regarding the, the public hearing, it's back before you tonight. However, it appears that it was mistakenly not agendized as a public hearing. And so I'm gonna work with the city clerk to see at, at what opportunity it can come back for the council as a, as an item for, to be held for a public hearing.
Do you need a motion for a date certain on that?
Well, it's not absolutely necessary, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to work with the city clerk to figure out exactly what that first opportunity would be. Or she might know right now. She's looking at the calendar.
Since we made the gaffe, I would recommend a special meeting.
Yeah.
We made a gaffe. We made a mistake. You don't let that wait another month.
I say we have a special meeting on the 14th of September.
Do you, um Wait, I think a public hearing has to be a regular meeting. Is it not? Speaker?
No, not if you notice it.
Well, typically, that's the case, although she's looking at the calendar now regarding publication.
Let's go with the guidelines of whatever the city clerk has recommended to do it properly, so we don't have to do it again?
Gee, I only did that for 20 years.
October fif, the city clerk's indicating that she believes October 5th is the earliest date that we can bring this back for a public hearing.
So the soonest we could put it on as a public hearing would be October 5th. That is correct.
Okay. Is, uh, do we have any speaker cards on this item tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Does anyone else want to speak tonight?
I have Scott Stotler.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I don't know to what extent I could really even get into the project right now if it's not prepared to have a, a move or a resolution or a vote tonight. Uh, I can tell you how discouraged I am right now. It took us three months to get back to this hearing. In my career, I've attended thousands of hearings. My sons even at one point told, uh, my wife said, Dad's gotta be having an affair because he's, nobody stays out this late at night and comes home at midnight or 1:00 in the morning. And I can tell you that the way the last conducted hearing happened on our project, I can tell you, out of many projects I've been to, I've never seen it in a situation where you had people in the audience still trying to speak. The public hearing was not even closed down yet, so here we are again. So I don't know that I really want to get into the presentation and all that right now. I've got the attorney ready to speak, my partner's ready to speak. I've got some people from the audience ready to speak. I just don't know. I need some direction and find out if it's something that we should go into tonight or if, if, if we want to have another meeting, then that's, that's fine. Uh, I just need to know some direction, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council.
Yes, so the issue was, it wasn't supposed to be a public hearing, so it would be best to do your presentation at the meeting set, we're trying to set for October 5th, I believe I heard, and then you can do your presentation and everyone can speak. Of course, everyone is welcome to speak tonight too because it is listed on the agenda, but that would be up to you and us with you.
Um, I mean, we're prepared to make
Yes, you know, we can't make a decision tonight on anything because it's not supposed to be correct.
Well, I don't know that it would be hoof us to go ahead and make our presentation and all of that if you're not able to make a vote. So I think that we'd rather just wait in respect of time and everybody else's time here. And I apologize for anybody that's there watching this meeting via Zoom. Uh, I apologize. I just, uh, I'm kind of, kind of, uh, without words right now, so.
Yeah, we apologize to the, the mayor. That was made unfortunate.
Why could we not have a, is there a way that we could have a special meeting for that? Because we've just got, we've already lost three months just trying to get back in front to even continue the meeting here. Okay. Understood. Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Did any of the other guests want to speak at all?
Co-Cooper? No. Anthony Lombardo? Anthony, please go ahead. Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. My Zoom connection or the city attorney's microphone weren't that clear this evening, but I think I had a specific to say that the matter was not properly agenda or not properly noticed for the public hearing. Um, hopefully you received my letter earlier this afternoon and has some facts which I think you should be aware of. The city attorney, if I could ask this representative, please call me tomorrow because this delay has some other implications related to the timing of your last action on this matter that we're gonna have to discuss because the, if the, at, the, the actions that the city took last time to properly terminate public hearing, they have some legal ramifications and we'll have to discuss how we deal with those if the hearing's maybe delayed again. And as I set forth in my letter, the council has never denied a request. The contract doesn't give you the authority to do that, and I would recommend that you consider the legal ramifications of violating your agreement with Sunny Slope and hopefully at the next hearing, you can move forward in a manner which is both equitable to the property owners, fair to the property owners, and consistent with how you treated every other property owner in this city. Thank you.
And Mr. Lomb, Mr. Lombardo, this is Jason Epperson. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, thank you. I fully intend to give you a call tomorrow. That won't be a problem. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Epperson.
I have no more speakers or speaker cards, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So at this point, we do not even make a motion on this because it was not properly agendized, correct, city attorney?
That's correct. I think the staff has adequate direction to bring it back for October 5th. Yes.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to item G1. Reports from city council members regarding their committees. Councilmember Lennar?
I have no committee reports this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Spencer?
No reports on the list.
Councilmember Sentes? I have no, no good report. I do not have any reports either, so we are going to move on to item G2. Informational reports from city council.
I, I met on Okay, thank you. I did meet with the San Vito County Business Council in their annual monthly meeting, and it was a good meeting. I got a great update on the status of Highway 25 and the different alternatives that they're apparently discussing. And they, they've got a lot of work to do there, so it was good to be, to hear it from the business council. And then on the second report, I spent some time with Ambid's staff making sure I understand the regional growth forecast, the way they come to their numbers for the regional growth forecast. Uh, I have a meeting tomorrow, and I, I think that's on the agenda for adoption. But I have my questions answered. I'm confident that our staff understands exactly on the regional growth forecast. They met repeatedly with Heather Addison and Maura Toomey, you know, all the folks there at Ambid, so, so staff, I'm confident that, that they know what I was concerned with. And I was concerned with the, the way they get the appointment number because we have it through our computer base. But I, I feel like we're on the money as well as we can be right now. They're always amended every couple of years too, so that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, our Vice Mayor Spencer?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Sentes?
A couple of things. Number one, I just want to point out, I've never, ever used swear words towards any U F F. Don't forget that the beginning of one term, you swore to me and threatened me. Three times that are on the record. The century is a whole other story. And on top of that, I just want to know what's the update? That Councilmember Spencer came back to me at Shield, the city. We haven't heard anything about that. Nothing at all. So it would have been a different story. It's sad that it's not to this point, but it is what it is. It is what it is. I've lost a lot of respect in you, a lot of faith in you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Um, I report, I don't have anything other than to report that there will be a special document for the rapid adoption of Highway 25. We have narrowed down the choices, and that decision will be made on Monday, September 14th. And hopefully, the meeting is 6:00 P.M. Uh, if you have an interest in what's going on with Highway 25, the wider than Highway 25, and what will be going on, that would be the day you tune in. You can contact Council of Government's website, or like, they usually have the meetings posted up on the county's site also, I believe. Or you can contact me directly, and I will get you information. Very, very important night. It's finally going to happen. I know a lot of you have been waiting on this, so we're, we're excited to make that final decision and get moving on this highway. on this highway project that we all know is sorely near. Uh, City Manager, do you have, it's nice to just, by City Manager now, and we're intro. Do you have anything to say?
Have an update on the general plan, please.
Yeah, I would like to just remind everybody, with the Parklet program, we are still moving forward. We have the traffic engineers looking at the traffic study to look at not only the stop signs on San Mito Street, also how the traffic's gonna affect Monterey and, and East Street with the one-way traffic. Plus, they'll be doing the design for the diagonal parking. So we just ask for everybody to be patient, and this is the part that takes a little bit the longest, because it is in with the consultants, but we are pushing them to move as quickly as possible and hope to have further updates here real soon. That's it.
Thank you, sir. City Attorney?
No statement, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Chief?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk.
I sent all council members a, a email regarding the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and then the voting delegates received via email a copy of the resolutions that need to be voted on at that teleconference. So I'm not sure if there's a way for you to do a vote without attending the teleconference. So I just wanted you to, to maybe, if you, if you don't remember seeing the email, let me know, and I can reshoot it out to you, or if you're interested in doing it, because I think it's all teleconference this year, so just, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I, I, okay, there's no business, but tonight, I do want to adjourn in the memory of Tim Ryder. Tim Ryder is a, is, those that know him, very kind person that passed away from Oxford this, this weekend. I had the honor of marrying Kim and his wife, Susan, almost five years ago next month. Two incredibly beautiful people. Our condolences to the Ryder family. Susan, we, we love you, and anything we do to support you, please let us know, and I hope we can adjourn tonight in his memory. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I, I make a motion to adjourn in Mr. Ryder's memory. My condolences.
Sir, a second? Sir, is there a second speaker?
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Open night.
I thought we would not be back to council meeting again.